I'd like to call the December 13, 2011 city council meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Council, agency member Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Houghs.
Here.
Ross. Self.
Here.
White. Mayor, Chair Schneider.
Here. Okay, I need changes to the agenda, Mr. Armstrong. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, we do have a number of speaker slips here, and I have two minutes at the podium for you. We're going to start with Kenneth Locke, who'll be followed by Ruth Wilson.
My name is Kenneth Locke. Just did a sign yesterday, came to me, says Merry Capitalism. It's kind of a play on Merry Christmas. It's just my way of saying that Christmas is kind of taking a backseat. And then I just did this, I'm going to have running for a little while, it says, "I'll work for Jesus." Which is kind of interesting, because I'm figuring, I think there's some people that believe that Jesus is coming back, and actually soon. So, it would be, I think in everybody's best interest to prepare yourselves for this time, because he'll represent your boss, and the service that you're going to provide will be in his name. Right now, this community, I'm surprised that none of the churches have come to you and said, you know, "We would like if you would refrain from Christmas and your participation with it," because it's become a mockery of Jesus and his birth. So, it's just, again, it's kind of amazing that the churches in this community are not standing up and saying that this is a mockery for the birth of the Christ. You know, it's just kind of amazing that this is actually taking place. Thank you.
Ruth Wilson, will be followed by Patricia Petoli-Wybel.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I really am appreciative. I called last week about the lights not coming on early enough at Pershing Park when we're attempting to feed the homeless and the Doctors Without Walls are there. I called and left a message for you, Madam Mayor, and it was taken care of so quickly. And I had a call from the Park Department, and they wanted to know exactly which light, and lo and behold, Wednesday, the light was on at the right time. And so whoever says city government moves slowly, I am here to defend that and say, "That was swifter than I expected." Thank you. And that leads into a verse in Isaiah 58. Our church, Ocean Hills Covenant Church, is studying Isaiah 58 right now, and verses 10 to 11. If you spend yourself in behalf of the hungry and satisfy the needs of the oppressed, then your light will rise in the darkness and your night will become like noonday. The Lord will guide you always. He will satisfy your needs in a sun-scorched land and will strengthen your frame. You will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. So, I hope that we can all be keeping compassionate, and I want to wish you a very merry Christmas. And I would like to say, Michael, you will be missed. Thank you.
Patricia Petoli-Wybel, and the final speaker will be Kate Longstory.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, city council, city staff. We'd like to take this opportunity to present this resolution of appreciation. Edison is celebrating their 125th anniversary, and we'd like to extend appreciation to the city of Santa Barbara for being a valued and significant part of our history. Edison International looks forward to our lasting partnership as we embark upon the next 125 years. And I'd like to also present this plaque. This is our energy partnership plaque, and we'd like to recognize Jim Dewey, as he is one of the most valued and respected partners, representatives in all of Southern California Edison. He's very knowledgeable and very effective in our partnership.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Dewey, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is kind of a shock to me, but the work that we've been doing at the city is very important, and we value Southern California Edison as a partner, and look forward to many years of productive relationship. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, I guess you couldn't be much older than 125 years producing electricity, but here's to another 125 years into the future, and congratulations, and thank you for the partnership. It's really an important one. Kate Longstory?
Madam Mayor and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, I am publicly requesting placement on the Santa Barbara City Council agenda for the first meeting of 2012. Today, in the news press, Teri Tyler, a guest columnist, called for an investigation and mentioned my case, that I was arrested and found guilty of attending a school board meeting. I am hoping that in the next 30 days, our fine journalists and media will assist me in exposing deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption. Taxpayer-paid lawyers collude, conspire, and cover up wrongdoing. I have an email from Teri Frank from CalAware.org, a top expert in the Brown Act. I have been a victim of retaliation by taxpayer-paid lawyers. Please remember that those lawyers, who are paid by the citizens' tax money, are held to a higher standard than those working for a private corporation. We, the people, are the attorneys' clients. I don't know where Steve Wiley is, but he is quoted in these chambers, saying that Kim Sanchez has been very good at firing more cops than any other police chief. That makes me wonder. How much have we suffered? I know that we are outraged. I know that you have turned a blind eye and a deaf ear to we, the people.
Thank you.
I do have one more statement, that I suffer from legal abuse syndrome, and ask the people to Google that, and I'm hoping that the Teri Frank email, which I gave to you, and I now will be giving to the media, I'm asking that that be forwarded to the jury, who was not allowed to see it.
Okay, you're timed out, thank you very much.
My sentencing is on Friday, December 16. Please attend. Department 12. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar, and there's some items to read.
Item one, redevelopment agency continuation ordinance, recommending that council, A, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to take effect only if Assembly Bills 1X26 and 27 are upheld and the stay is lifted, to make remittances under protest required by AB 1X27 in order to avoid dissolution of the redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara. And B, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to take effect only if Assembly Bills 1X26 and 27 are upheld and the stay is lifted, determining that it will comply under protest with the voluntary alternative redevelopment program pursuant to Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code, in order to permit the continued existence and operation of the redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara. And item two, adoption of an ordinance for a lease with Sushi Gogo, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a five-year lease agreement with one five-year option with Cayoon and Sarah Wang doing business as Sushi Gogo for the restaurant at 119B Harbor Way, effective January 13, 2012.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Does anyone need to pull anything off the consent calendar, or is there a motion to approve it?
I move consent.
There a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee today heard a report from the redevelopment agency on the past year's projects. We also heard a report on the CAFER, which we will be hearing more about soon. And we recommend that the full council accept the report.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number 14.
Adoption of updated design review general guidelines and meeting procedures for design review boards, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to approve revised general design guidelines and meeting procedures for the Historic Landmarks Commission, Architectural Board of Review, and Single Family Design Board.
Thank you. Ms. Baker, or Ms. Wees?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're pleased to be here today for these updates of these design guidelines. The recommendation is, again, that they would be approved. They're a simple set of updates for all three documents, to bring them into consistency. Just to give you some background, as to when these documents were last updated, and what the focus of the update is now. Basically, the Historic Landmarks Commission guidelines have been around since 1995. They're quite outdated at this time. They're a very short document, just about 12 pages or so. And in the meantime, we did do a concerted effort to create a comprehensive set of meeting procedures and guidelines for the Architectural Board of Review, and those were adopted by council in 2007. With the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance update, Single Family Residential Design Guidelines update that occurred, we created a similar document for the new Single Family Residential Design Board, and that was last updated in April 2010 with the two-year review of the NPO update. So, at this time, we wanted to focus on updating the Historic Landmarks Commission guidelines to bring them into par with the other two documents, which run, you know, closer to 80 pages, and cover a good number of topics that are important for design review hearing bodies. So, looking at updating Historic Landmarks Commission guidelines, we also realized that even just since April 2010, we've had a number of ordinance revisions on topics like the term for project design approval, or time extensions and so forth. And so we thought we should just go ahead and bring them all into consistency at the same time. So, there's more minor updates to the Single Family Design Board guidelines, and then the comprehensive update for the Historic Landmarks Commission. But again, much of the material is familiar to the commission and the design review boards in general, since these types of documents have been in place for the ABR and the SFDB already. The new versions of these were reviewed in March and April of this year, and since that time, we've been working closely with the city attorney's office regarding the landscape maintenance provisions and the tree preservation ordinance, and how these guidelines reference those documents. There was a decision made that those particular ordinances may need to have some updates in 2012. In the meantime, these guidelines can go forward simply by generalizing their references to those particular parts of the ordinance as they relate to the design review hearing body work. So, in general, the three sets of guidelines follow three parts. They have three parts. The first is architectural design guidelines, which are general. And of course, if there's more specific design guidelines for the area of town where a project is occurring, such as El Pueblo Viejo district guidelines, or Chapala Street, et cetera, those would take precedence over these general design guidelines that are included for the boards. The second part of the guidelines is landscape design, and then third is meeting procedures. So, they've all been brought up to date. They've all been renamed similarly to general design guidelines and meeting procedures. We did a little bit of work with the goals section at the request of the Historic Landmarks Commission. This particular one was found to be helpful to be added for all three of the hearing bodies, and it says, "To ensure that the review process is fair and consistent, both in policy and implementation, to allow all who are involved to benefit from the process." As far as illustrations, you'll notice that there aren't any for these guidelines at this time, and that's because, just with efficiency, getting the important text updates done, and then perhaps later, we can go and add a library of photographs on the web, as we've done for the El Pueblo Viejo historic district, as staffing and time may permit. Just highlighting some of the important, more important items that we addressed, the administrative staff review standards, we spent some time with the subcommittee of the Historic Landmarks Commission on refining these a bit. There are some new definitions in the guidelines. With the attorney's office, we took a special look at the California State Business and Professions Codes, and made sure to be carefully citing when a licensed architect is needed or not for different projects. And then last, in the meeting procedures section, as I mentioned, there's some code updates that we needed to refer to, one of those being the compatibility review criteria referencing that, and the time extensions, project design approval term that I had mentioned earlier. And then there was just a number of other smaller updates, and not only codes, but just current procedures, that we've made consistent throughout the guidelines. So, we've gone through the appropriate public review, the guidelines have all been made consistent, we've worked closely with the city attorney's office, and so these minor but important and thorough set of updates are ready for adoption by city council day. And again, here's our recommendation, and we're available for any questions or comments from the council.
Thank you. Are there any public speaker slips for this item? I don't see any. No? Okay, so it's to the council. Ms. Self?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In looking through the documents, a lot of times when we get updates, it either highlights or has a hash out or in red what the changes are, but that hasn't been done here. Has I missed that? Oh, okay. Yeah, very highlighted.
It's not in red, it's in gray, right?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of specific questions. For ABR and the Single Family Design Review Board, there's a whole new set of rules regarding trees, the arborists, right? Had those appeared anywhere before?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, Madam Mayor, it's all in the ordinance now, so really the guidelines are simply restating the ordinance.
Okay.
And interpreting it for the public.
Okay.
And staff.
All right, and it's also kind of putting them now formally in the review process?
No, it would actually be part of the review process now, it's just that this helps with the clarity as to how to do that efficiently for staff.
So, these are not new restrictions or anything?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Right.
That comes as great relief to me. Because when I looked at some of these, I thought, my gosh. And then, a quick question for Mr. Armstrong. Because this, I guess, shifts some work, will this require assistance or additional personnel for the arborist at all? Can he handle all this, since it formalizes a lot for him?
I haven't been informed it'll require any additional work from the arborist, so I'm assuming that it won't, that this is already within the duties he already performed.
All right, because I think that would be important. We're not in that mode now. All right, that's all I got. Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Riley.
If I could follow up on Councilmember Hotchkiss's first question, one of the concerns the city attorney's office identified with respect to these guidelines, and it's actually fairly common when guidelines, for example, try to restate what the municipal code requires, but does it in different language, or paraphrase what's the municipal code. And the danger, our concern, is that the guidelines then are read as new or different regulations, restrictions than which are imposed by the municipal code. This was really an issue for us with respect to the regulation of trees. So, I just want to be clear that we've advised the community development staff, and Ms. Baker referred to this, that a possible need to look at the municipal code regulations on trees, and we aren't particularly, the city attorney's office, we're not suggesting that they be amended, but those regulations do not typically restrict or require a permit for anything but a front setback tree. That front setback permit requirement has been in the code for something like 30 years. There are provisions in, for example, the Single Family Design Board ordinance that talk about approved landscape designs, and that do restrict a homeowner's ability to alter and approve landscape design. But we've advised community development, again, that the municipal code provisions about removing a tree or substantially trimming a tree are controlling, and generally, the only thing that's regulated are front setback trees. And frankly, we just want to be clear that the city has not yet gotten into regulating backyard trees or private trees such that someone has to get a permit in order to trim one of those trees.
Actually, I think, though, am I wrong, but there are new permits required, for instance, for a parkway tree. I don't know if that's new, but that's called out.
Well, of course, parkway trees are considered city trees. We actually view those as trees owned by the city, and no one's supposed to be trimming or touching a city street tree without a permission from us.
So, front setback trees have always been subject to regulation?
Yes, for like 30 or so years.
And so the public understands, if I want to cut down a tree in my backyard, I can do that, assuming it's not a protected tree?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to answer that question in that it does vary across these guidelines, because we have three different boards, and they do have different purview. And so we have tried to make that clear. For example, in El Pueblo Viejo, it is a different matter in terms of tree removal than on a single-family zone lot on the Mesa or in the hillside area. Likewise, in the Architectural Board of Review, when they review multifamily properties or commercial properties, there are other municipal code requirements for commercial properties. So, each set of guidelines and each board does have slightly different purview. But what's important for you to know is, in terms of being new, there are no new regulations here. However, these are used to apply relatively new regulation. I think you all will recall, about a year and a half ago, there was a multi-departmental team where the city administrator's office did work closely with the Parks Department, and did review what the tree removal standards would be for the city, and there was an amendment to the municipal code, relatively new. And so these guidelines are now being written to reference those new sections, relatively new sections of the municipal code. But we do not create any new requirements, per se, but we do have a procedure now, again, we did talk this through with the city attorney's office, that at community development, we do issue permits for removal of the trees, when they comply with the ordinance. And it was necessary to explain how that would be done for certain cases, to change trees and landscape in the city. But this is not creating new rules. That happens at the ordinance level. This is procedural only.
Okay, and really, the policy thrust of what we do is, insofar as possible, excuse me, is to maintain the urban forest, if I can put it that way. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Ms. Baker, how long have these documents been available for public review?
Well, since April and March, they've been at the Architectural Board of Review and the Historic Landmarks Commission. That's when they were reviewed there, and then we've had things available online as well, so.
And how was that advertised to the public?
Through agendas that are posted for the...
Through the ABR and HLC agendas?
Yes, and it's online and posted at the meeting room, and then, of course, the meetings are televised as well.
Okay, thank you.
There are no other comments or questions? I would entertain a motion from someone.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt the updated design review guidelines for ABR, SFDB, and HLC.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, thank you. Item number 15.
Comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Samario, or Mr. Armstrong. I guess, Mr. Samario, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Samario, Finance Director. And we're here to talk about the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2011. We have two newcomers to this process this year. The first, we have Mr. Rich Kakuji. He is a partner with Lance Sola-Longhart out of Brea. This is their first year with the city as our auditors. And as you know, we have also a new accounting manager, Ruby Correo, who actually prepared this report along with her staff, and just wanted to thank her for all her hard work. She did a great job this year. We started the audit late because of other reasons, but she got the work done on time and produced a good product, so I'm really happy about that. Just so you know, we went over this with the Finance Committee not too long ago, so this will be a more summarized presentation. I just want to point out that the term CAFER, obviously, we throw out a lot, but what it means is it's a comprehensive annual financial report. And it's comprehensive because it includes sections and information that we aren't required to produce. It's not required by our city charter or by state law. It's something we do for a few reasons. One, because we think it's the right thing to do. It sort of suggests a higher level of work and standard. It does also happen to meet the qualifications or requirements for a GFOA, or Government Finance Officers Association Award. It's a national award program, and it's considered pretty prestigious, and we've gotten it probably for the last 25 years, and we expect to get it again this year. And it does provide more information. As you look through the document, really, the middle section is what we required, everything before that and after that is in order to meet these requirements, but also just to make it a comprehensive report. We just think it's fairly good information about the city. So, we are required to prepare what are considered basic financial statements. Again, we do a CAFER, but the basic financial statements are required by city charter and by state law. The comprehensive annual report is helpful when we issue bonds, because the rating agencies look at our financial statements and see that it's been professionally done, and it sort of gives them a better impression overall about our city's finances. And it also, as I said, communicates important information to the public. There are three major sections, and I'm not going to go through all the components, but we have the introductory section. One important document there is what we call the letter transmittal. It sort of describes what the report is and gives some information about the economic outlook. The main section is the financial section. This is the part that's covered by the auditors, and you can see that the very first item there is their opinion letter. It's in the documents, two pages. All the work that they do is basically described, and the results of that audit work are described in that one opinion letter. There is what's called the management's discussion and analysis. It's equivalent to, as Ms. Correo said at the Finance Committee meeting, our budget message in the budget document. It's just narrative, it gives a broad overview of the finances of the city and how we did, which I think is really helpful, and then the basic financial statements. And then we also include at the very bottom, a statistical section at the very end, gives tenure data, demographic information about the city. Some highlights, this is in the body of the financial statements. About eight or nine years ago, all cities and counties and state governments were required to present financial information in a completely different format, and this is kind of, this looks a little foreign, because you don't see things like general fund or redevelopment agency fund. That requirement said that we have to consolidate all of the city's finances into two columns of information, those that are governmental nature and those that are business type. And the whole purpose of this is that prior to 2003, there was a lot of criticism about local governments, that there was no way to really measure and see how are they doing financially, as it's measured in the private sector. The focus is totally different to sort of one-year sort of perspectives, because that's what annual budget's about. But there's no way to see whether the city or any agency was financially in good health. So, this financial statement actually is designed to tell you that. And it shows all of the assets that the city owns, all the liabilities that it owes, and then the difference between those two numbers are the net assets, which is broken down into various categories. As you can see up in the asset category, we actually do own quite a bit of fixed assets or capital assets. It's infrastructure, buildings, and the like, about $860 million worth. You can see down below, all the liabilities we should present, that's redevelopment agency bonds, water agency bonds, water fund bonds, wastewater bonds, and the like. So, you know, the portion of net assets you see, that's related to investments invested in capital assets, a big number. It's tied to those capital assets of above. It's tied to those capital assets of above. You can see what portions are restricted for projects. If you work your way down, you can see the one line that there's been a lot of talk about in the last few years, the unrestricted portion of net assets. In governmental activities, about $22 million. That's primarily the general funds portion of reserves for disasters and economic uncertainties. In the business activities column, that's same thing, but just for enterprise funds primarily. It says unrestricted, and it is, in a sense, within the, if you look at it in a silo sense, so that for the governmental activities, you know, you can't cross over to the other column. So water fund reserves, airport reserves can't be used by any general fund activity or even by another enterprise fund. So even though they're called and restricted, they are restricted to those funds that, that they relate. This is a, a statement of activities. We break it down just for the government activities. And all this is really trying to do is to show you by function or by department, how much, what is the cost to provide those services and what's, what revenue is being generated? And then the net of that to the far right is essentially the subsidy of those activities from tax revenues. So overall, on a net basis, kind of at the middle where it says total governmental activities, that net, that number is $83 million in subsidies that's funded from those numbers below that. Most of that is taxes of $92 million and some other revenues. The one thing you'll notice is a big number, is $29 million, negative number, those are transfers. You may recall in the end of June, the Council and the Agency Board approved the transfer of redevelopment agency assets to the city pursuant to a collaboration agreement or cooperative agreements that were executed. And that portion represents parking structures that were owned by the RDA that were transferred to the downtown parking fund. So we're going from a governmental activity reporting to the business-type activity reporting. So we're actually moving assets out of this category and into the business-type activity category. And in fact, if you look down at the bottom right, you'll see that money or those assets coming in at $29.5 million. You'll also see this is for the business-type activities, the various enterprise funds, and you can see that they don't really have a subsidy like we saw earlier because their, their fees are designed to recover all their costs. And so their fees, their fees are set accordingly. There is no subsidy from taxes. All the rest of those revenues come from investment income and, and other kinds of This is the traditional presentation of the general fund. It's, it's not like we showed earlier where we don't show all the long-term assets like capital or long-term liabilities. This is the focus on just one-year kinds of, one-year assets, all current. And down below, you'll see the fund balance, which a lot of people are, tend to be interested in. Some new categories, non-spendable, restricted and unassigned. The non-spendable portion of fund balance represents or relates to those assets that aren't spendable, like loans receivable through our MLAP program or loans to our enterprise funds that we've made. Those are monies we don't consider spendable because they're not available in cash, even though they're still an asset. Whereas the, the unassigned portion is spendable, and that for us, for the general fund, represents the, as I mentioned, the reserves for disasters, the reserve for economic uncertainties and the like. This is kind of a summary of the general fund results, and we've talked about this before when we were brought to you, the final quarter or final year interim statements. To me, the important column is the one right in the middle where it says actual. The good news is, we did end the year in, in the black, $1.9 million, 100 million, 100.7 million in revenues, 98.8 in expenditures. So $1.9 million surplus, obviously added to our reserve balances this year, so it's, it's been good news the last couple of years since we were able to add to the reserves rather than use them. Overall, the, in a variance perspective, $3.5 million favorable variance, primarily in the expenditure column, $3.3 million in under expenditures, which is really great. I mean, it's higher than we would typically see, so we really held back expenditures this year. The one thing that caught my attention on the revenues is I, I thought intuitively that we had generated more revenues above budget than just $163,000 because we've heard great news about bed tax, sales tax and the like. And what I was reminded of was that we still budget that year-end variance of $1.2 million. So that's basically what we were kind of, we, we ended up coming close to that, a little bit better than that. But we also budgeted additional revenues at mid-year, $900,000. Remember, we raised bed tax revenues by about $900,000 to fund overtime costs in the fire department? So that's why the, the comparison to budget doesn't look as good, but in reality, we did much better on revenues than we had anticipated. Okay, so I'm going to go through this footnote, I apologize. This is the footnote nine, which relates to our pension, and I think it's important to go through it, and I'm going to go through it relatively quickly, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. As you know, we have three plans with our employees for retirements, miscellaneous plan, the fire safety plan and the police safety plan. They're very distinct plans. What you'll see in the far left is that although it relates to 2011, that the valuation date that, that relate to these numbers is three years ago, more than three years ago, June 30, 2008. And that's just how PERS does it. You know, they give us data, and it's based on three-year-old essentially valuation information. But I'll go through this, and just keep in mind that whatever I tell you on these numbers, they've gotten worse since 2008. We all know that. So the accrued liability column, all the, you know, $325 million, for example, with miscellaneous, that's the amount of money in simple terms that we're supposed to have in the bank to fund all of our obligations as of June 30, 2008. So that's what we're supposed to have in the bank. The next column, next, where it says actuarial value of assets, that's what we actually have. That's, so the comparison between what we have in the bank, what we're supposed to, is the next column, the unfunded liability in our case. So if you look at miscellaneous, we are $61.4 million underfunded in relation to where we should be as of June 30, 2008. And as a percentage funded, we are 81.2% funded, much different than where we are today. I, I don't remember exactly, but I would suspect that we're somewhere in the mid to the low sixties of, in terms of funding status, based on June, as of June 30, 2011, in real time, or real terms. So it's gotten substantially worse. My, my guess is it's going to get better the next several years, but, you know, we were obviously at, at the low point this past year or a year before. So overall, you could see that we probably have unfunded liabilities somewhere around $105, $110 million. But all the plans are about 81% funded as of June 30, 2008. Questions on that?
We have a question from Mr. House.
Take us back to that last little piece, so the hundred and some million dollars.
Yes, if you add up the, where it says unfunded liability, about the one, two, three, fourth or fifth column, the 61.4 million, 20 million and $28 million, that's about $109 million of unfunded liabilities.
Okay, and then how much do we have in the fund?
So the, to the col, to the left of that, the column where it says actuarial value of assets, that's the, the assets we actually have with PERS to fund our, our liabilities.
Three, four, not quite 500 million. Okay, so 20% unfunded, 80%, okay.
Roughly, that's right.
Just a few minutes.
No, that's exactly right.
Those are big numbers, and first I choked on the 100 million, and then I realized there was some money in there still.
There is.
Okay, thank you.
And just for full disclosure purposes, this is something that we had to start disclosing, I think, four years ago. And this was as a result of some complaints and criticisms of government, a lot of, a lot of criticism of government, but that we weren't really disclosing liabilities relating to promises we made to employees when they retire. And I guess it's a valid point in a sense because in, for some cities in particular that have promised substantial obligations or promised benefits to employees when they retire, they've never been disclosed anywhere, not even a footnote disclosure, let alone in the face of the financial statements. And there are three areas where we are now required to disclose those promises. And the first is what's called retiring medical. As you may or may not know, we have made promises to our employees that when they retire, they are entitled to certain payments on a monthly basis to help, to help defray their medical costs. One of the requirements is that they have to work for the city for 15 years in order to vest. And then secondly, it's, there's a cap on it in terms of dollars, and I think the max is in the low $300 per month. And it also stops at age 65, presumably when Medicare kicks in. So if you compare to other agencies, and I can name some in the just immediate south of us, who have promised lifetime medical payments for their employees with no caps, this number is a substantial number. It's 30, 40, 50 million dollars. For us, it's $8.7 million because we are capped in terms of dollars and age, age 65. So if somebody retires, for example, at age 60, then we have five years of obligations toward, to them. I'm going to get back to the middle one. And then sick leave is real simple. You know, if, if people who work here, they accrue sick leave time, and if they don't use it, those hours, they can cash in at the end of the, when they retire, either as a lump sum payment or as in terms of an annuity. And we measure that, that liability, and for us, it's 3.6 million dollars. The middle one is a big number, and I'll tell you right now, for me, it's just a theoretical liability. It's, 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 it's not, if you think about the city, I always say, if the city were to close doors a day, what monies would we owe to anybody? We would owe the first and the third, but the middle one, we wouldn't. And this is, this relates to the fact that for employees who retire with the city, they have the opportunity and the option to, to participate in our group insurance program and, and get the same rates that I would get as an active employee. They pay for it themselves, but they still get the premium that's calculated on the same pool, the same basis as everybody else. So somebody who's retired at age 65 or 64, they're going to pay the same premium as somebody who's 25 years old with the city, even though we know that their exposures are different. And in a sense, then, we as a city and employees are essentially are subsidizing retirees for premiums that they would have to pay that would much, be much higher than if they just went out on their own and, and got private insurance. And that differential is, is considered or called the implied subsidy. And we are now required to measure that for not only retirees that we have that are, that are re-participating, but for employees that are active today, they measure those folks that what's going to be the obligation into the future when they retire that, for this subsidy. It's a really, in my, my opinion, a, a convoluted analysis and, and calculation, but it's in concept, it's, it's just that subsidy we provide to retirees. And for us, it's $24.3 million. Big number, theoretical number. Again, if we closed doors today, we wouldn't have to pay that out. Any given Tuesday, council can decide we're not going to offer that sort of benefit, if you will, to our retirees, but we're still required to measure it, and that's the number. Any questions on that one? I didn't think so. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kikuchi. He's going to talk about briefly the audit process and the results of his audit.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Rich Kikuchi, and I'm a partner with LSL, CPA's, your auditors. LSL's been engaged by the City of Santa Barbara to perform a financial audit of your June 30, 2011 financial statements. As far as the objectives of the audit, we spent several hundred hours on this audit in order to render an opinion on your financial statements, rendering an opinion that they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Towards that end, we reviewed and evaluated the internal controls set in place here at the city. And also, we performed various tests of compliance with laws and regulations and the provisions of contracts and grant agreements. In regards to this financial audit, you know, the auditors have a lot of responsibility to do our test work, but the city also does have responsibilities, and that's, that's summarized actually in Statement and Auditing Standards 114. The primary responsibilities of the city is that, well, the financial statements are your responsibility. Actually, the, the finance department has the expertise, has the people to prepare these, these financial statements, and they did so. And we audited or we rendered an opinion on those financial statements. The city has responsibilities to establish a system of internal controls in order to safeguard the assets of the city, also to make available to us all the financial records in order to perform our audit. And also, the city is required to design and to implement a system of controls to detect and deter fraud within the city. And we did various types of tests and interviews in regards to fraud, and we felt very comfortable that the city was abiding by those policies. The audit really, it, it's, it involved several hundred hours, and quite a few of my people had about five or six of my staff involved with this audit, probably altogether about three weeks, 500, 600 hours. It really was quite extensive. The first phase was a planning phase, speaking with Bob and his staff, doing some interviews here at the city. Our, our firm specializes in the audits of cities, so part of that was based on the knowledge of various cities of, of similar size. So planning was a big part of the process. Phase two was where we came out and actually did our interim engagement. We did that in the month of July. We were here for about a week, and at that time, we pretty much centered upon testing your various systems of internal controls, be it payroll, disbursements, revenues. We did things like making sure that your cash and investments were timely reconciled in accordance with the city's investment policy. All that was part of the planning process as well. And phase three was when we came out for our year-end engagement. At that time, we were here for about two weeks, and we were here in the month of October. And at that time, we did detailed account analysis, looking at various account details, performing reconciliations of your accounts, again, looking at your cash and investments, making sure that it was properly reconciled. And then we went a step further and, and did things like send independent confirmations to your banking institutions to verify year-end account balances. We did things like cutoff procedures, making sure that revenues and expenditures were recorded in the proper accounting period. So a lot of effort was spent. And then the final phase was a financial reporting phase. As I mentioned, Mr. Samario and his staff were really spearheaded putting these financial statements together, but we did a lot of teamwork and a lot of bouncing of thoughts together doing that. As I mentioned, the audit really, the objective is to render an opinion on these financial statements. There's actually in that, and I believe you all got a copy of the, of the CAFR, but in there, there's a, a one-page auditor's report. And that report really would state the type of opinion that we come up with based on our test work. And we've rendered an unqualified opinion, which is a good thing. That's what you want. That means without qualifications, we feel that the amounts in these financial statements are materially correct, that, you know, the, you can rely on these numbers for management decisions and such. So we spent a lot of hours in order to get these financial statements put together, not only the comprehensive annual financial report, but also on the redevelopment side. But every year, we also, on top of that, issued two communication letters. The first is the SAS 115 letter, or otherwise known as a management letter. So during the course of our audit, when we're doing our, our internal control test work or even account analysis or, you know, discussions with employees, if, if we determined there was a weakness in your internal control system, we would report that in there, in that letter to you. If during the course of our audit, we had to make some quote-unquote "material adjusting" journal entries to correct an account balance or perhaps correct a beginning equity account balance, those items would be reported in that letter to you, which we will, which I will report to you annually. I'm happy to announce that letter basically this year is a clean letter. There's nothing really to, to report. So basically, based on all those hours of test work on your control system, we felt comfortable that things were operating as intended. There's another letter that we issue, which is called the Auditor's Communication Letter. That's a little bit more standard, and it's got, you know, certain sections that we're required to report, talking about accounting policy changes or estimates. If we had any, any disagreements with city management during the course of the audit, we would let you know in that letter. If there was any indication of fraud or any significant findings, we will put that in that letter. And I believe you got copies of both of those letters. And that letter, again, it was a clean letter, not, nothing really to, to report. In the, in the city financial reporting arena, things are always changing. Over the last few years, there's been various significant GASB pronouncement, Government and Accounting Standards Board pronouncements that have really affected how cities report on their financial statements. GASB 31 came out of several years ago, marking cash investments to market value. 34 came into play where we put the fund-level statements on a full accrual basis. GASB 45 came just a couple of years ago, where we, we report the liability for OPEB. There's another one coming around the corner. We want to let you know that as far as pension reporting. Mr. Samario kind of talked about that a little bit on that footnote. An exposure draft came out in June 2011, pretty much, you know, getting people's thoughts on it and, and letting people know that it's coming around the corner. But the basic substance of that pronouncement is that, well, you saw that footnote that Mr. Samario was going over, that unfunded pension liability. When this comes into play, which will be in actually, it's, it's projected to come into play the fiscal year ending June 1000, June 30, 2013, that, that liability, that unfunded liability amount will actually be on your financial statements. It'll actually be a liability on the statement of net assets. And the whole premise for that is just for more transparency, that that number is going to be there rather than in a footnote. But the GASB is still working through that, but we kind of want to let you know that that's kind of coming around the corner. And so, you know, this was our first year as your auditors. I felt that it went really well, especially for the first year. The first year is always the toughest. I want to thank Mr. Samario and his staff for making. I want to thank Mr. Samario and his staff for making it really a good process, and I guess I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We do also have a public comment speaker on this. It's good to switch auditors around, so welcome, you know, have different set of eyes, look at all the numbers, so appreciate the report.
Thank you.
We do want to get a public comment. Ethan Scheckman?
How much time do I have?
You have two minutes.
Not very much. Protecting the rights of even the least individual among us is basically the only excuse the government has for even existing, according to Ronald Reagan. The statistics Samario is delivering today are inaccurate because fees collected to meet fiscal ambitions have been illegally imposed and collected, which are calculated into revenue generating sources via fees, fines, and penalties imposed by the parking office against elderly and disabled folks currently protected under the Social Security Act. The Social Security Act reads, "The right of any person to any future payment under this title shall not be transferable or assignable at law or in equity, and none of the monies paid or payable, the rights existing under this title shall be subject to execution, levy, attachment, garnishment, or other legal process, or to the operation of any bankruptcy or insolvency law. No other provision of law enacted before, on, or after the date of this enactment of this section may be construed to limit, supersede, or otherwise modify the provisions of this section, except to the extent that it does so by express reference to this section. Nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit withholding taxes from any benefit under this title if such withholding is done pursuant to a request made in accordance with Section 3402P1 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 by person entitled to such benefit or such person's representative payee." Now, equity, the right claim or interest existing or valid in equity, the money values or a property of an interest in property in excess to claims or liens against it, a risk, interest, or ownership right in property, and the common stock of a corporation. The agency does not allow for community work service or payment plans which impose an all or nothing scenario, leaving people stripped of their vehicles only to maybe die of hypothermia in the park, as especially with those of special needs who cannot diop or adjust under such makeshift environments. I am not flagrant offender where two parking tickets assigned tolling over $200 went over a street sweep.
Need to wind up, please.
Over a no-emergency area where citation was issued behind my back while I was in the vehicle on emergency call with door open. Second ticket involves a vaguely posted green curb issued at 7:01 a.m. because biking area on Annapooine Moon never took in account for disabled persons. This has served dramatic detriment against me and my possible recovery that your commissioned agency has unlawfully seized my vehicle in either ignorance or in gross defiance against the Federal Social Security Act, where no procedure exists to dispose enforcement parameters without violating the legal code and where mutually conflicting conditions apply. This issue has already--
You're way beyond two minutes, so if you can wind up, please.
Okay. This issue has already been addressed over the summer with city attorney. That tells me that I would have to sue you to resolve remedy. However, no legal process waives dispensation not otherwise protected under state-level immunities for city administrators in the event that they collude against citizens of the United States.
Okay, thank you very much.
I need to hear a motion, if there could be any way that you can adjust policy to be compliant.
Mr. Scheckman, we'll get to the motion after public comment. Thank you. There's one more public comment. Annie McGill?
Madam Mayor, Council?
I'm going to put that mic next down to, there you go. Thank you, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Council, is that better?
Yep.
With regard to the audit and the police department embezzlement of funds, how could the audit be clean when that's going on in your police department?
If you could address us, please, thank you.
How could the audit be clean with the amount of money that was embezzled in the police department? Or, I don't understand that. So I would like to know how the council feels about that.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes public comment. To the council, Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out that during the Finance Committee meeting, I had a similar question concerning the police department. And the, of course, this is LSL's first year on this job. They were not auditing the city at the time when the funds appeared to have disappeared. Obviously, I think it's very important that we monitor, this is an area where a significant amount of money was coming into the city that was not coming in directly to the finance department. And I actually had a discussion with our auditor on the way over here to City Hall, and I wanted to make sure, and he assured me, that at every one of those points, parking, for instance, is another obvious example, there's a lot of cash coming in, that every one of those points will be part of a very serious oversight function by their company, so.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but I think you pretty much covered that.
Yes, a part of our process, our planning process, is to look at various parts of the city over the course of, you know, multiple years. This was our first year. That issue in the police department was made known to us as soon as we were, basically, right after we were engaged to do your audit. It was primarily for issues that transpired in prior years. We did take that into account into our planning process, and our plan is to, over the course of the first few years, to review the procedures of various departments, taking in cash off-site apart from City Hall.
So compliance program of some form in terms of checks and balances, in terms of how money is handled in between departments, is that what you're talking about, what kind of guidelines and things may--
Pretty much, yeah. Making sure that, because strong internal controls, they're intended to safeguard the assets of the city. So we would review that and give good feedback to the city.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Self?
Thank you. I don't know if this is something that would show up in the audit, or if Mr. Samario can talk about this. Do we have any idea of the amount that was embezzled?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, we don't have a good number yet. We have a sort of a range that's been talked about, but we're working on that right now. We've got some, we've hired a forensic auditor to sort of do an analysis of what the potential loss was, and we're doing our own internal analysis, but we haven't come up with a good final number yet.
Thank you.
But we'll come back to council at some point to tell you what that is.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, two things. First off, it was actually, we discovered the shortage ourselves, so it's not like somebody had to come in from the outside and say, hey, something going on here. So I think that's to your credit. But secondly, since hindsight is perfect, is there a way to actually ever guarantee if somebody's going to do something illegal and cover their tracks, we're always going to have that challenge, are we not, of catching it through whatever policies are in place? I mean, the whole purpose is to get around those if somebody wants to do it illegally.
Yeah, the, you know, internal controls, there's a cost benefit, you know, as far as the checks and balances. It's going to be nearly impossible to guarantee that nothing like that will ever happen again. However, it's a part of the audit process, you know, we take that into account in our planning, and I think by rotating our test work throughout various areas of the city over a course of years, I think that'll give the city further assurance and us further assurance that the controls are in place.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, one other question, and thank you for clarifying all of that. That was a good question to bring up. The slide that said general fund final results, and it showed the budget variance at the end of the year. So I don't know if this was brought up, because I know it comes up each year when we look at the budget in terms of where this puts us in terms of policy reserves. If you could let us know that.
Madam, I'm sure. So if you look at the bottom number where it says unassigned fund balance, fund balance is another term we use for reserves. The general fund actually has about $26 million in total fund balance. Some of that, as I mentioned, is non-spendable. So if you think about fund balance being nothing more than the difference between assets and liabilities, fund balance is nothing more than what our assets are in either spendable or non-spendable form. The non-spendable portion of 8.3 relates, if you look up above, we have various receivables to the extent that those receivables are long-term in nature, and I think of the Employee Mortgage Loan Assistance Program as an example. Those are about total $4.1 million. We really can't spend that money. It's an asset, and therefore, it's part of our fund balance number, but it's not spendable. It'll become spendable over time as they're repaid, but, so we want to just sort of categorize that as being non-spendable. Then the restricted portion is some other dollars, mostly encumbrances. But the unassigned portion is that portion that relates to our policy reserves. It's $17.79. We picked up about 1.9, as you saw earlier, this year, so we're about 1.9 better than we were last year.
With a smaller budget, too, so the percentage-wise is higher. Is that correct?
Well, you know, for 2012, you know, our budget has grown, so some of that 1.9 million dollars that we had in real dollars went to fund the additional reserve requirements as our budget grew in 2012. And so for every dollar, you know, that we grow, 25 cents has to be put aside in reserves. So that kind of factored into the equation as well.
Okay, so in terms of a fund balance, it's better than it was last year. It's the short version of the story--
Much better than last year, for sure.
But we're still moving up towards getting to policy--
We're still about eight or nine million dollars, or around eight million dollars short of where we should be.
Okay, and that's the, not the emergency disaster reserves. We haven't touched that at all.
It's the budgetary or economic and certain reserves.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, or is there a motion?
A move that we accept the CAFR.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 16.
Zone 1 solid waste franchise recommendation.
Okay, move to Ms. Schmidt as she gets seated.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Kristy Schmidt, as you know, and I have with me today a team of folks, Matt For, the Environmental Services Manager. We also have Leith Zett and Natalia Enrich from HF&amp;H here, and of course, Mr. Samario is here also for this item. So as you know, in October 2010, we began a process to do a renewal of the franchise agreement for Zone 1 of the city. The city is divided into two zones for solid waste collection service, and Zone 1 is the zone pretty much west, southwesterly of State Street. And that has been held by, had been held by Allied in one form or another since going way back, but the current agreement is a 10-year-old agreement. So we were looking to do a competitive process, we're recommending a competitive process for that. And during the process of looking into this, though, Marburg, who is the hauler for Zone 2, bought the interests of Allied here in Santa Barbara. As part of the approval of the assignment of that agreement back in July, council asked Marburg and invited Marburg to submit a preliminary proposal in order to evaluate it, to determine whether it was necessary to go ahead with the competitive recruitment, I mean, the competitive proposal process. So we did receive that proposal. This is a little interesting. In a typical proposal process, staff would provide some very detailed specifications for the services that we would expect under a proposal, and also for kind of a format of the response, how we wanted to get the response back. But in this case, the ad hoc committee directed us not to provide any guidance to Marburg, which really left Marburg free to propose in the way they thought best to the city. And so that led to a couple of interesting outcomes. First, we got a proposal for both zones. So the rates and services that Marburg has proposed are for both Zone 1 and Zone 2. We also saw some significant rate structure changes, and we'll talk a little bit about those, but they're particularly significant because of the shift in policy direction that they would represent as far as providing incentives to divert green waste, food scraps, and recycling in the rates. And then we also received, we got an alternative proposal, which was interesting, for Marburg to assume the billing that our billing office currently does for residents for solid waste services. But because that would result in some significant loss, $820,000 of revenue to the general fund, we really focused on the base proposal, which continues the status quo as far as billing. So as you know, we have a contract with HF&amp;H Consultants to help us to evaluate the proposal and to do the competitive RFP process. Once we received the evaluation, we really, with HF&amp;H, focused our attention on trying to evaluate that proposal. And the major areas that we asked HF&amp;H to look at were to look at the service changes and see, are these reasonable service changes? Is this sort of the consistent with industry standards? The implications of the rate restructuring, because this was not something we necessarily were expecting, what those implications, how that would affect overall revenues, and what the implications of that were. The reasonableness of the rates that were proposed and of the levels of compensation to the hauler that were proposed, diversion commitments. And then we asked them to consider the likelihood of, if we were to go out to bid, the likelihood of being able to attract a better proposal than the one that we received from Marburg. In addition, we want to, based on interest from the council, have them look at Galida's most recent franchise process and results, and also the county Zone 2, and tell us sort of how this proposal compared to those new franchise contracts. And as part of that, they really needed to analyze service levels, rates, the costs, what Marburg's costs were, the fees that the cities would be receiving, the operations and industry practice, and really put that all into their analysis. The analysis was complicated by the fact that the proposed proposal, the rate structure, would be very significantly different from our current rate structure. So trying to translate the new rates into the old rates and do comparison to our current status quo took more analysis than had we put out a proposal ourselves and put out a format ourselves. In addition, there are some fundamental differences in the way that services could be accomplished in the city versus the county and Galida. Most significantly, the county and Galida, a lot of the rate decreases that they saw came from moving from semi-automated service to fully automated service, which leads to significant cost decreases, and that Marburg was able to pass along some significant rate decreases to them because of the change in service level. The city, in talking to Marburg, is not really a candidate for that kind of service just because of the way our streets are laid out and our density and things like that, so. But the analysis was very complicated. Let's see. Here. Apologize, I have to kind of watch here. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't really see up there. There is a summary of the service changes in the staff report, and I'm just going to go over some of the general observations that HF&amp;H gave us from the proposal and not the detail of the proposal, but in general, includes most of the major service components that we would expect from a proposal, given current industry standards. This also includes some of the service enhancements that we saw in the Galida proposal and in the county proposal, like collection of batteries and cell phones, and greatly increased recycling in the single, at least in the single-family area, increased recycling and increased green waste in your base fees. So that'll be good to see some of those services come to us as well. Also, bulky collection twice a year for the single-family sector rather than one time a year and extended to the multifamily sector. The rate restructuring was a significant focus of the analysis, and there are some, again, it's detailed, kind of the total rate restructuring in your summary, but in general, it does provide rate decreases to the single-family sector, but increases the proportion of revenues that will come from businesses and from multifamily complexes. So those rate payers, on an overall basis, will pay more where the single family will see some rate reductions, you know, anywhere from 7% or even higher. Also, in general, this, the rate restructuring significantly reduces the incentives for diversion that council had previously built into the rates, reducing the incentive for recycling in the business sector to 50%. recycling in the business sector to 50% of the cost of trash. It's currently 30, Matt, 30?
Thirty percent.
30%. And increasing rates for food scraps and, and green waste to just, to 90% of the cost of trash, and currently, those are significantly lower, also 30%, right? Okay. As far as overall hauler compensation, the net compensation to Marburg under this proposal would actually increase slightly. That said, because the proposal is that there would not be a CPI increase in July of 2012, by 2012, we think that the, that the compensation to Marburg would, would be slightly, would be about the same. What we didn't see, and what HF&amp;H didn't see in this, was the efficiencies that we would expect to see from Marburg now having both zones in the city and being able to optimize their service for both zones. Also, we would expect, there's a, there's a 5% discount for people bringing their trash to the curbside. We'd expect to see more savings to Marburg for that, for that reduced level of service than, than that would be reflected, reflective of, so. Also currently, and this is, when Marburg did the proposal in early September, we still had not implemented the October 2011 city fee increases that we implemented. And so they didn't really have the, the full picture of how that was going to look. But under this proposal, the, it assumed that once the proposal went into effect, the city would no longer need any of that fee increase. Whereas in reality, some of that fee increase went to the rate guarantee to Marburg, but part of it was also funding solid waste fund operations due to the loss of the franchise fee and things like that. And so this, the proposal as it is now would, would actually result in a loss of fees to the solid waste fund of approximately $347,000 per year. So that's really significant. So more observations about the rates and the hauler compensation. Overall, HF&amp;H found that the overall compensation would be on the high end of what we would expect, where we did to do a competitive process, given the competitive processes they've done, and that if we were to engage in exclusive negotiations with Marburg, we should expect to negotiate a more favorable proposal. Another area we asked them to look at was diversion commitments. There are no proposals for increases to diversion under this proposal. HF&amp;H spoke with some staff at Marburg, and they said that they'd expect diversion around 41%, which is approximately where we are now, so it would be about the same. There was also no proposal for guaranteeing meeting future or current mandates and goals. We do expect the state to increase the mandates on us for, for diversion, and that's already a little concerning, but when we're talking about reducing the incentives to recycle at the same time, you know, the, the lack of a, a commitment or a, you know, a guarantee to, to meet our diversion levels is, is something that, that causes us some concern. So given that, we, we now go to the question, okay, is it, is it worth it to move on to a competitive process? And to look at this, HF&amp;H looked at competitive processes. They've been involved when, they, they do this professionally, and they had, they found that on average, when they do a competitive process, it leads to about a 17% rate decrease in the agencies that they do a competitive process for. Because we could only achieve in a competitive process, rate decreases in half of the city, citywide, we could only expect if, if we were to do approximately the average, an 8.5% decrease. But, but, but we potentially could do much better if we were to do a competitive process, according to HF&amp;H. However, there are some special challenges that we have as a city that, that might limit our ability to attract other bids, and that would be our geography. We're, we're isolated from, from other areas. A lot of these competitive processes were in the LA area where, where they're not quite as isolated and, from each other and from, just in general. Also, there are no other local franchises that will be up for renewal in the future in the South Coast, and, and that means that a, a proposer would need to either not have a base here or establish a base here, but only for, for the contract value of half the city. And so that might keep it prohibitively expensive for someone to establish a base here and to be competitive with Marburg. We saw this with Waste Management at the county process, where Waste Management has a North County base, but didn't have a base here in the South County. And at the Board of Supervisors meeting, they said that one of the reasons they weren't able to be as competitive with Marburg and Allied down here in the South Coast was because of that. They had the base of operations here and Waste Management didn't. And then again, it's only half of the city. It's, it's a, it's a half a contract versus a whole contract. So our recommendation would be not accepting the proposal as submitted. Again, HF&amp;H thinks that we, we, if we do engage in exclusive negotiations with Marburg, we should be able to get a better deal, but that we do engage in those exclusive negotiations, subject to an agreement with Marburg that would allow us an additional year if we were to enter into these negotiations, and we still don't have, after a six-month period, we still don't have agreement. It would allow us to add a year on to the current franchise terms so that we could, you know, go back to the drawing board and do a competitive process. And also for Marburg to cover the procurement costs. We have a contract estimating it's going to be about $120,000, and that's what our contract is for currently, and we've always said that the successful hauler would, would be asked to reimburse the city for those costs. And then to provide the city with costs and profit information. One of the things we ran into with this proposal is, is a reluctance on Marburg's part to give us full cost and profit information, because we had not yet said, hey, we're going to enter into exclusive negotiations with you, and that could put them at a competitive disadvantage if we went into, if we later went into a competitive process. And so they said that once we agreed to exclusive negotiations, they could provide that information. And I should say HF&amp;H did have a chance to look at it. City staff did not. And then, so we brought this recommendation to the ad hoc committee in November 21st, and they concurred with the recommendation. So the major negotiation points we would expect to focus on in an exclusive negotiation would be just a better overall deal, trying to get better rates for our, our rate payers. We'd want to look at the city fees and support and try and keep status quo funding for our solid waste fund, and, and the proposal also proposes some reductions in funding for Looking Good Santa Barbara and for public education. We'd want to look at, at those. We'd want to look at some diversion guarantees, including liquidated damages for not meeting diversion goals. And then we want to revisit that rate structure and, and really determine where we want to go with, with some of those suggestions. So that is our recommendation. I'd be happy to take questions, and also other staff members or HF&amp;H.
Thank you. Questions first, and there's been a request from Representatives of Marburg also to present, and given the large contract we're talking about, I said I allow that, but do we have any questions first, or? You have questions? Go ahead, Ms. Self.
My understanding is that both the tonnage of trash and the diversion rates are down, which are primarily linked to the economy, and so I guess I can understand their uncomfortableness to meet the diversion rates, not seeing anything on the horizon as far as economic improvement. So can that be factored in somehow? Thank you.
We're really looking at, when we talk about diversion rates as a percentage of trash, so if the percentage of trash goes down, the percentage we would expect to be diverted would also, I mean, the, the amount of trash goes down, then the amount we would expect to be diverted goes down as well, so.
Also gone down. And one of the things that has been brought up is that the, with the increase in value of bottles and cans, I mean, you go around to any park or public place and people are picking that out now, so is that, did I hear that wrong?
Yeah, I think, I'm going to let Matt For address the diversion rates.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, we've certainly seen a decline in the overall amount of trash that's disposed. We've seen a wide swing on that statewide. It's the two comments I would make are that, just like economic cycles, trash cycles are cyclical as well, that's why when we give a, an exclusive right to trash through a 10-year contract, there are going to be ebbs and flows in trash generation. In exchange for taking on some of that risk, it's a reasonable expectation from the jurisdiction that the hauler also account for those ebbs and flows as well. We're giving them a 10-year cycle, and we're also giving them control over all of the trash that's collected through the entire city. That's the balance. So the city gives up some, the hauler takes on some risk, and with that, we, we have some reasonable expectation of diversion mandates that would keep the city positioned in compliance with state mandates as well as whatever other city goals the council might adopt.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when the state sets diversion level guidelines, how does it enforce them?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, the state is, I'm going to answer this in two parts. Historically, what the state has done is they have developed a fairly elaborate formula that accounts not really on real numbers of generation, but rather economic indicators, primarily financial data that's generated by the Department of Finance, some on our disposal numbers, and there's kind of a, a black box formula that then spits out the jurisdiction's quote-unquote diversion rate. Ours, as we've said before, hovers around 70%. The diversion rate of our franchise waste, that which we actually collect, is substantially lower, and the delta between those two is that the state considers things like second-hand stores, thrift shops, something called grass cycling, where we just leave our grass to decompose, all, all kinds of other allies. There are probably 40 categories of quote-unquote diversion. What we focus on is really the hard and fast number, the data-driven numbers, which are, what is our franchise diversion rate? So that's historically how it's been, is the state's formula. What the state has done recently of late with the adoption of other clarifying legislation is they're less interested in the formula, the black box formula, and more so in what are, what is the cadre of diversion programs that the jurisdiction has in place to, to encourage diversion? Things like the rate structure, that's a primary driver. The rate structure is going to divert facilities that we have, both at the transfer station and the landfill, and other facilities through the private hauler. For example, the, the city assisted Marburg with their CND facility through, through a 10-year franchise extension. So they're looking more at those things. What, what programs and initiative has, initiatives have the jurisdiction adopted to achieve diversion? Oh, I'm sorry. So the other part of your question is, what happens if we don't hit it? It starts with a compliance work plan. The state would say, we don't feel that you're meeting diversion mandates for the next couple of years. We're going to really manage your diversion programs, have much tougher oversight in new ordinances that will be adopted, changes to the franchise agreements that might be adopted, other diversion outlets through facilities or even third-party providers. It would start with that. If we still didn't make a good faith effort at compliance, then pursuant to state legislation, there are penalties of up to, I believe, $10,000 a day for non-compliance.
So for instance, if I, if I recall correctly from a previous council agenda report on this topic, is it true that the county, in their rate structures, doesn't provide incentives for recycling?
The county does provide incentives through the rate structure. They also, each jurisdiction does have, for example, a certain number of diversion programs or amount of default recycling that's inclusive in the rate. So as part of the rate you pay, you get an amount of recycling that's provided.
And so do we know how our existing recycling incentives compare with other jurisdictions? Are they near the high end, the low end, somewhere in the middle?
Our diversion rate incentives now are, are slightly more aggressive than the neighboring jurisdictions. Part of that is that, you know, council made a policy decision several years ago that recycling from any number of factors, from the economics of it, to, you know, limiting the jurisdiction, the city's liability on what we dispose, that we won't have the liability that goes with that, as we've seen with Ealing's, to the revenue that we take in from combing old recyclables warrants that kind of rate incentive.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just broad statement, it's, in, in good economic times, we have more trash, and in poorer economic, economic times, we have less, and that's what we're experiencing now. And, but that doesn't necessarily, I think, as you pointed out, affect the rate of diversion one way, and in fact, all things being equal, those should go up and down at the same rate. Am I correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, certainly with, I think we get an artificial short-term diversion increase just because our overall, the, the amount of waste that is disposed is smaller. I mean, so we would get a, a temporary bump in that. When the economy approved, that would presumably attenuate.
Okay, but generally, it falls and rises, maybe lags a little bit, okay. Diversion is, is, I think has been described a sort of win-win situation, is it not? It preserves Tahigas longer. It, it actually brings us a revenue stream. I don't know if there's a third win to that or not.
Yeah, the, the long-term costs of taking care of old landfills, like at Puyallup and Svetis, that's the long-term liabilities for.
Okay. So, and I think what you're saying is it would be in our interest in one way that you would now negotiate with Marburg would be to further be more aggressive than this particular plan has regarding diverting, diversion? Am I correct?
That's correct. And the, our, one of the findings by HF&amp;H is that this diversion proposal really rolls back the incentives quite substantially to what we have in effect now, even in, when compared to the closure of the gap that the council made in, on October 1st with the rate increase on business diversion services. So it, from a solid waste management standpoint, it behooves the city to limit its liability by keeping trash out of the landfill. We were not liable for the impacts of that. It does extend landfill space, and as we've seen, with the exception of one or two down years, recycling, combing old recyclables have been a definite benefit to the solid waste fund.
Okay. And Mr. Francisco was making a point, I think, before, or at least I think he was making a point, that we're doing actually pretty well compared to other cities regarding our diversion right now?
The, the purpose of the rate restructure in November of 2009 was to jumpstart diversion in the business sector. We were not doing well back in 2009. We were sitting at about, in the low 20%. You know, the, the diversion rate in the business sector was about 20%. We are now about, in about the mid 30, well, the low 30s, say 31 or 32%. It, it achieved its purpose in terms of jumpstarting diversion. There's still a lot of room to go. We, we have a lot of business accounts that have no recycling at all. I mean, so we, we do, there is room for improvement, and we can capture those combing old recyclables.
What would it be a goal for us if it's like 30 or 31% now? Do we have a goal in mind of what we're trying to go for?
Sure. Actually, the city has adopted a formal goal through its P3 performance measures that two-thirds of the business sector would have two-thirds of their overall service subscribed to recycling services, either green waste or combing old recyclables, and that's not a, an unreasonable goal.
Okay, so realistically speaking, that's achievable. That's not just a pie in the sky, but it's actually can be met successfully.
It's achievable, and it's even further supported by recent state legislation for mandatory commercial recycling and, and mandatory multi-unit residential recycling.
Okay. Last question, maybe this is from Mr. Armstrong. What's the downside to what we're proposing here? And by that I mean, this whole, is, further negotiations affect.
I think, I mean, we're, we're recommending, and I think the ad hoc committee concurred with the recommendation. I don't think there's a downside. I think, you know, this is a very large contract, and typically, we bid these out, and the competitive process is, is how you come up with the best price. And because of the unique situation we have here with the recent purchase of the allied interest in, in receiving the proposal, it makes sense to, I think, to get the proposal we received from Marburg and to negotiate with them. I think, you know, is, is, as Kristi or Ms. Schmidt mentioned, there are some issues we think we need to discuss. All of those are subject to future negotiation, and we just wanted to lay out what we thought those issues are, assuming Marburg's agreeable to that one-year extension, so if we're not successful, that we're, we ensure service to our community. You know, we think this is the way to go.
And I guess I'm going to hear shortly, but are indications from Marburg that And I guess I'm going to hear shortly, but are indications from Marborg that they're agreeable to this?
That's my understanding, but I'll let them speak for themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. House, and then we'll have Mr. Carlson come up.
So, who does the negotiation part? I mean, I want, I sort of half-understood that. And by the way, while I was out of the room, I was watching your presentation on the TV in the other room.
We would have a negotiating team, which would be staff, supported by HFNH.
Okay. They wouldn't be negotiating for us. We would actually be in conversation with Marborg.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. We would be an active part of those negotiations and actually taking the lead in them.
Okay. And then, the cost of the actual services that are being provided going forward, what's the, what's our safeguard against escalating costs that would be associated directly with the consultant's participation? I mean, how do we manage the costs? The cost so far went up pretty dramatically from what was originally anticipated. So, how do we manage for that as well at the same time as we're doing all this?
Well, I think we, you know, we watch the hourly rates. We look at whether the hours that are being put in are reasonable, and so we think that they are. We've been looking very closely at our bills, and, you know, we try to consult HFNH only when we really think their expertise is necessary. But that's, and then we do have a not-to-exceed limit on our current contract, and so we would need to come back to council if we wanted to get more authority to do that. That said, you know, in a $160 million 10-year contract, it's kind of a drop in the bucket, the overall amount, you know? And the interests of the ratepayers in that contract probably greatly exceed, even if we did feel we needed to go a little higher with it. But at this point, we really, we have a limit on what we've been authorized to spend.
Okay. Thanks. And I think there's some presumption on the part of staff that the status quo, what we've been getting so far from, in terms of service, Marborg, at least in their half of the city, and comparable service perhaps on the other side or close to it, up to now, is not adequate somehow, that we really, in the negotiation, we would be able to get better service at lower rates? Is that the, is that the concept?
I think we found the services, the conclusions of HFNH were that the services are pretty consistent with industry standards, and they would be an improvement in services, particularly in the single-family sector. It's really the rates we'd want to be looking at.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I actually have some questions about the funding moving forward, but I'm going to hold off on those until after presentation. So, Mr. Carlson, and, did you have some slides or something? Okay. If you could set that up. And then we'll go to public comment after that. If you could also just state your name for the record.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Derek Carlson. I'm the business manager for Marborg Industries, and would just like to make a few comments on the proposal that we have submitted for your review. First of all, the proposal that we submitted at your request was based on the proposals that we had recently submitted to the City of Galita and the County of Santa Barbara. And in both of those circumstances, we won the franchise agreements in both of those areas through vastly different processes. It was our understanding that the City of Santa Barbara was wanting to have services, updated services, the same as these other jurisdictions had, and wanted to be able to compare our proposal with those of the other local jurisdictions to make sure that not only you were getting a good deal, but you were getting the most up-to-date services that are now commonplace in these new proposals. So, that is the format that we took in developing this proposal, and that is what we put together. So, we really, although we did have leeway to do whatever we wanted, we did take that direction, and that is the structure from which we formatted this proposal, so you could easily compare and build upon the framework and the base that had been set by the other jurisdictions, so you could perform your evaluation and see an apples-to-apples comparison, and also have a cost-effective process where you could use the local knowledge of the processes that had recently occurred. In this proposal, we have offered a lot of the fees and services that are same. Some things have been tailored for the City of Santa Barbara. Part of that comparison that was done by your consultant was to show the values of the proposal that we submitted to the City of Santa Barbara versus the proposals that we sent to the City of Galita and to the County of Santa Barbara. And that analysis showed, after they went through there, and we have a copy of this for everyone as well in the detail, but the summary of HFNH's analysis was that our proposal for the City of Santa Barbara, when boiled down to an apples-to-apples comparison, showed a 17 percent improvement in what was offered to Galita and a 31 percent improvement in what was offered to the county. So, we submit that our proposal to the city, when compared apples-to-apples, services, service ranges, prices, service levels, is a very favorable proposal for the City of Santa Barbara. As far as the rates are concerned, Marborg's proposal does provide rate discounts for single-family residential customers, multifamily customers, and commercial customers. There are currently 20,499 paying customers in the City of Santa Barbara. Our proposal offers 18,134 of them immediate rate discounts. All single-family residents and the vast majority of multifamily customers are receiving an immediate rate discount. The majority of customers that are not receiving an immediate rate discount are those commercial customers who, in the 2009 commercial rate restructuring, benefited disproportionately from that restructuring and had their rates lowered beyond what anybody else had. And that is part of the rate restructuring that staff referred to, that we have tried to put into our proposal, so we have a more balanced rate structure that is sustainable, especially in the commercial sector. As far as the conditions that have been put on us, we do agree to the one-year option for the Zone 1 agreement. We have agreed to pay the $106,000 towards the consultant's costs, and we also agreed to provide the consultant with any additional information they may need. On the next slide, we kind of broke down the $106,000 that we are offering for the consultant's costs. This was provided to us, and it shows as of December 1st, the consultants had a total billable amount of $85,800. $71,000 of it went to reviewing our proposal. $14,000 of it went to not reviewing our proposal, but another portion of this process. So, we are proposing to take the $120,000 that you have committed to pay up to $120,000 to the consultants, back out the $14,000 that was not spent on the evaluation of our proposal, and that's the $106,000 that we are committing to pay for this process and for the consultant's fees. One more, one more, please. I want to get through the rate discounts. Again, just briefly, the restructuring of the rates that we proposed are no different than what we are charging in the City of, or I'm sorry, in the City of Galita and the County of Santa Barbara. The commercial rate diversion services for commingled recycling is currently about 50 percent in the county and in the City of Galita, and that is what we are proposing for the City of Santa Barbara, too. Those jurisdictions currently do not have food waste programs, but they are discussing adding those programs, and they are discussing right now adding those at the rate of solid waste is now. So, even if we adjusted your rates as proposed for the commercial diversion services, they would still be lower than any of the neighboring jurisdictions. So, your commercial recycling rates would be less than the County of Santa Barbara and the City of Galita. Going to the next slide, and one more. So, as far as the diversion rates are concerned, the County of Santa Barbara commercial diversion in our Zones 1 and 3, we're currently diverting 47 percent with the current rate structure of a 50 percent discount for commingled recyclables. In the City of Santa Barbara, the old allied Zone 1 is at 27 percent diversion, and Marborg's Zone 2 is at 39 percent diversion, for a total of 33 percent. So, you could see at even the higher diversion levels where the services, the service rates are actually paying for the service, we're still able to deliver a very high, and actually a higher diversion level. And the sustainable rate structure that we're proposing, again, is the same as in the city in Galita. So, we are looking forward to increasing the diversion in the city. And again, we feel that our C and D facility is going to be crucial in doing this. We're already diverting 150,000 tons per year through that facility, which is a major component of all of the diversion coming from the City of Santa Barbara, and we believe that continued and expanded use of that facility and processing waste will further increase your diversion. And we discussed recent state mandates. There's AB 341, which Matt referred to, which does authorize mandatory commercial diversion along with other diversion goals that the state is mandating. And it's important to note that by having the C and D facility where we can sort through the trash, it is a MRF that automatically puts the City of Santa Barbara in compliance with AB 341 without having to enact any other regulations or ordinances. You know, you can, if you would like, in order to increase diversion, but it's not mandatory. So, having that facility there is a major component of being in compliance with that. And we just wanted to address the concerns about diversion, and let's know it is a very important thing to us. We've invested heavily in it, and we think our proposal and our facility is going to be able to deliver that to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have one question, though. In the conditions, the last one you mentioned, Marborg agrees to provide your consultant any additional information they may need. I'm also asking about staff, because that was part of the issue. I'm assuming you also mean to give the information to staff as well during the negotiation process?
Yes.
Okay. Just to be clear on that. Could you also clarify a little bit to me, and maybe staff can weigh in on this as well? During the staff presentation, in terms of their analysis of the rates, they were saying that, stating that single-family rates are going down and other rates are going up. You gave numbers of everything going down somewhat, and you gave a distinction of who might also see rate increases, but it's an overall reduction, as I understand the way you presented it. But if I'm wrong, if you could clarify, because it seems to be there's a difference of view of how that's being analyzed between what you just said and what we heard from staff?
I believe the analysis that things are going to be fairly consistent overall is correct. And so, the analysis that multifamily is going up isn't true. The mass, the vast majority of multifamily is going down. You have some very large volume generators in the multifamily bin customers that will go up. But those rates historically have been lower than the commercial trash rates for, you know, for whatever reason, when these things were made way back when. So, we've tried to create some parity, you know, between all the rates as we were doing this. So, that's the difference.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. House.
Just a quick question. For the commercial rates, the commercial customers where the rates are going to go up, my understanding that those are the ones that, when we made the rate adjustment recently, the ones that brought, like recycling, for instance, some of the recycling bins were way, way underpriced, and we brought them up here at the city council level. That's what you're referring to, in terms of those that would be going up?
Correct. As far as the commercial customers whose rates are going up, the vast majority of those had their rates decreased in the 2009 rate adjustment, you know, greater than any of the other customer base.
Right. So, is there any real, there's no real difference then in your proposal to what we had already done in the rate change that we made here at council?
It takes it one more step. You changed it from 15 percent to 30 percent.
Right.
And we are proposing it move to 50 percent, so it being half the rate of trash. So, if you're recycling, you pay half the rate of what the trash rate is.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, you're taking, you're taking what we did and then taking it to a level where you've made it even at the 50 percent level?
Correct, which is consistent with the other jurisdictions, and we think is sustainable in providing long-term service here.
A sufficient incentive. Okay.
First, all this is still in the negotiation stage.
Correct.
We're not agreeing to any of this today. So, that's, but I just wanted to get the clarification between what I thought I heard was a little different perspective of what the proposal was. And I do want to acknowledge that you did do what we, we responded the way we asked in terms of bringing in a proposal in a timely manner. So, thank you for that. And also to agreeing the one-year option, I think, is really going to be helpful moving forward as we have this discussion. Did you have a question, Mr. White?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding that the, today, a big piece of the diversion program is rate-based, the food scraps and so forth. They have been, they're 50 percent of the cost of trash. What I'm hearing from the, where you are at this stage in the negotiation is that the proposed rate structure would not be, the diversion would not be happening so much from rates, but from the C and D facility? Everything goes, would then go through the C and D facility, and it doesn't now? Is that, am I...
Well, that's a possibility, but then you also have the state with this AB 341 driving a lot more diversion mandates, where it may not be necessary to create a unsustainable rate environment in order to drive your diversion. So, actually, the state is saying there has to be mandatory commercial recycling now, mandatory recycling for multifamily units that have more than five units. And so, we're saying that that is an option if you want to implement that, or we do also have a facility that can recover that material in another manner as well. So, there's options out there.
And I appreciate that the negotiations are in mid-course, but that, the difference of where your proposal is now and where the city sits now is that the rate is less of a driver on diversion?
That's true.
Would that be a fair characterization?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. F.
Thank you. The part in your proposal about taking over the billing, without you doing the billing, then you would have to adjust the prices upward? Am I understanding that correctly?
No. Everything you saw today was based on our base proposal. So, if we took over the billing, we would also reduce rates by another 5 percent across the board.
Okay. So, that would be an additional savings to our customers. Thank you.
Like I said, none of that is, thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. None of that's being decided today. That's part of the negotiations. We do have a public comment speaker, which is Kathy Murillo. Come on up.
Good afternoon, everybody. Kathy Murillo, Westside resident, trash ratepayer, and incoming city council member in January. I support a competitive procurement process in selecting a trash hauler for Zone 1. The ratepayers deserve every chance at low rates and good service. I think an atmosphere of competition will help us get a good deal. These are really good business people, and they are already playing hardball, as far as I can see with this proposal. So, maybe if you give them exclusivity, they'll have less incentive to give the city more of what we deserve. So, I'd like to say that, and it's a really big deal what you're thinking of doing right now, and that is creating a monopoly in the City of Santa Barbara for trash hauling service. So, I kind of wanted to just observe today, but I'm really moved to come up here and stick up for the ratepayers, and especially for people living in multifamily housing. If the rates go up, the landlords will raise the rates on the renters and apartment houses, and I'm standing here sticking up for them, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No other public comment speakers? Okay. I want to, I have a few questions, too. I was holding off, but maybe if I can start with questions. And first, just to address the process moving forward, we're being asked here today to move into exclusive negotiations with Marborg for Zone 1. And I just want to highlight a piece, and maybe, Mr. Wiley, you can just nod or make sure I'm reading it correctly, about what happens after that point, because it's not like we, well, basically, it says, "Assuming an agreement's reached, staff would return to council with a resolution of intent to award the franchise to Marborg and would include the full terms of the proposed agreement. It has to stay no sooner than 20 days later, as required by the charter. Then we need to hold a public hearing on the proposed franchise award. This would allow the public to weigh in on any changes. It would also provide any other interest hauler the opportunity to comment and express interest in presenting a competing proposal." So, I just bring that up because there is, there are a lot of good reasons, I think, and I actually agree with why we might, why we would go in this direction, given the city's geographic... city's geographic isolation from other areas and that there are no haulers, given that Allied has sold off its assets in the area. If Allied had not sold off its assets, we wouldn't be having this conversation, I don't think, because we'd have, you know, two present good haulers here. Give, you know, so there were good reasons for that and the recommendation that came forward. But even so, the process would be that there's a time period where everything is out there for people to review. There's an opportunity, if someone says, "I could do better," that this council could say, "We're willing to look at this or not," right? Is that, am I reading that paragraph correctly, Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, yes, you are. The city charter, Article 14 of the city charter, sets up this stepped public process for the city council to approve franchises. And essentially, it just creates a process where you announce that you might be awarding a franchise and requires, and significantly requires, the precise terms of that franchise to be part of that public noticing process. So, and it's not just the rate payers who are interested in this. It might be competing businesses that would also like a shot at the franchise. And ultimately, as several of you have said today, this, there is no awarded franchise until that final step as required by the charter.
Because I want to acknowledge Councilmember Alex Murillo's statement about, you know, what if, are we going to get the best deal? And I think that process gives us the opportunity to really make sure what's going to be presented before us after this process is really, a really good deal for the city in that. And if it's not, then there is that leverage there that we could still open it up. And I acknowledge that Marborg is agreeing to extend their agreement by one year, so in case something goes, doesn't go the way we planned. So, there is time to do that. But I just want to emphasize that piece, that today's, it's a significant policy direction that we're asking to approve today, but it's not the last time we'll make a decision on who gets Zone One. It most likely will go to Marborg, assuming there's good faith negotiations here and there's really solid back-and-forth communication, and there will be. But it's not a slam dunk no matter what in stone today. And I think that's, so there's a lot of work to be done, is my point, and to acknowledge some of the concerns, I think, Ms. Murillo mentioned. So, that was one thing. I do have some questions about the, how much has been spent to date, where we go from here, and perhaps representation from HFNH can help us with this as well. There was a, there was a, I have a copy of as well, the amount that was spent to date as of December 1st, and which was the total is $85,896.50 out of a not-to-exceed $120,200, I think, contract that you have, we have authorized up to date. Has, is this the, is this the most updated number, or has there been other billable hours since December 1st? That's my first question. Small, like?
Thousand.
That, okay. So, minimal? Okay. So, we're not, okay. So, that, so just so we know what numbers are here. You know, when I first, I first saw this, because I saw the email, I don't know, a week or so ago, I was pretty astonished by how much has been spent to date. And I appreciate that we, that this council gave different direction of what was originally in the proposal. So, I understand that. I do think, though, looking at, and maybe you can help me out here, but looking at, the city of Galita had sole-source negotiations with Marborg, actually, and their total amount was spent was $60,000. The county had three contracts to negotiate it. They had received seven proposals. They ended up negotiating with two haulers. Their total amount was $80,000. So, we're already at 85.8, or maybe 86 now with one, another thousand. And we're looking at one proposal. The work plan we got for the $120,000 not-to-exceed included work related to evaluating four proposals and also preparing and issuing the RFP, which some of that money you started doing and then we told you, move it aside, which, that I can understand. But that seems small compared to this larger amount that's looking at this one proposal. So, I think it's important to bring that up, because the last thing I want is for you to come back, as we're really close towards ending this, saying, "We've exceeded the $120,000. We need more money." And, you know, the burn rate here is pretty high. So, I need some really good reassurance about what we do moving forward here. And I don't know who needs to address that, but, you know, it's a little different perspective than when I originally approved the contract to begin with. So, if you could address that, please.
Madam Mayor, as we said previously, this, this process was more complicated than an RFP where we lay out the form and format of what comes in. And if we do our job right, and the RFPs that I've been involved with in the solid waste industry, we're very specific about the form and format and the comparison structure that we're going to undertake, the protocol. With this one, not only did we, did we take Marborg's proposal, unravel it, and put it into a format that we could then begin comparing with other jurisdictions, but essentially, we did those three other comparisons. We had to look at the existing Zone One and Zone Two contracts, as well as Galita, as well as the county. And if you look across the jurisdictions, as we mentioned previously, each of those service packages vary. We had to break out the costs of the containers, both by commodity that's collected and also by the other services that are inclusive in those, you know, in those service levels to get to an apples-to-apples comparison. We also have differing services that are offered in some jurisdictions and not in others. We had to assign a value to those. Thirdly, we looked at variables like, or variations in collection methods, semi-automated versus fully automated, and had to assign values to that. The other piece to this is, in the absence of other proposals that came in for this specific RFP, we didn't have that. We then had to go look out at the other industry benchmarking data. And that's where HFNH really came into play as well, where we're drawing upon their experience of 300 procurements, looking at similar circumstances in Southern California markets, and trying to take the costing data, the operating assumptions, the routing data, and looking, you know, at the data that Marborg put together, and assigning some level of viability or substantiation to those, to those numbers. So, this was not a, I would just say, based on my experience, this process was more complicated and more intricate than even the formal RFPs that I've been involved with, where on the front end, staff had put the document out the door. It just, it really sets you up for success when they come in. I, you know, from that, I would say that a lot of the really, really hard work and intensive work that ate up some of these hours is over. You know, if, we'll figure out how far apart we are with Marborg when we get into the negotiation stage. I would think that, as Ms. Schmidt mentioned, the city staff negotiation team is going to take much more of a lead and do much more of the work in the negotiation phase, whereas we were reliant on HFNH more on the front end. So, that, that would be the first observation that I would have about the next stage that we're in. I think that we're going to play a much more firsthand role in that, even, even using the, the documents that we've already set up to test some of the analysis and do some of the sensitivity analyses when we get into the negotiation stage. So, I think that the, we're really over the hump unless we get into negotiations and we're really far apart, or there's something, we may come back to you and say, "We have the potential to save rate payers a half million dollars. To do so, it may cost 8,000 or 9,000 to do so." And then that's a policy decision about whether that warrants the additional cost.
So, thank you for that explanation. The, when the subcommittee met and made, concurred with the recommendation that Marborg pay for the amount to do, as was the policy, I didn't have this amount in front of me, so it was only afterwards. I really do want to stay within that 120, and I think getting updates of where we are, you know, sooner rather than later in terms of hitting that, which makes, leads me to think, as what you said in terms of negotiations moving forward. I had agreed to the contract before because it made sense to me and I agreed with you that you needed specific expertise that you did not have in-house to bring in that expertise to look at an RFP or look at the, whatever it was that we needed to look at in terms of the substantive content of the issue. Moving forward, we're looking at negotiations. You guys know how to negotiate. I mean, you know, Christie in particular, you know, how many, seven bargaining units, a variety of other things. I mean, the, the content now you have, and actually, you know, we do have good information here about what the issues are, what the policy concerns are, what, what are the negotiation points, basically. So, I would, I would expect, as you say, that really you're going to be mostly it and maybe look to the consultant for now in terms of verification of content or checking to see what else is happening elsewhere, that you just don't have the expertise. But really, from here forward, I think it's, it's our, to make sure it's our city's best interests moving forward with negotiations, and you have the expertise to do it, to do it in that manner. And also, just to make sure we stay within this consulting fee, because I will not be happy coming back unless there's some really outstanding circumstance of raising the rate, because I remember the last one. It was, it was quite a debate last time and how many, how many things we, how many proposals we were negotiating. And, you know, this contract agreement, and it was even, I think it was a 6-1 vote, you know, didn't come easy. And I want to make sure we stick to that and not hear something different, you know, too late down the road. So, I felt like I needed to ask you in, you know, at the public hearing about what the differences are and to, you know, strongly say, moving forward, I have some high expectations that there will be good faith negotiations moving forward. I have confidence that both sides will do that. The subcommittee will certainly still be involved, but that we don't get to a position where it's going to be 150,000 or 175,000 because we weren't as efficient as we could have been. So, I just felt like, after looking at this, I needed to bring that up, and I don't know if any of my colleagues wanted to say anything about that. My final thing is, they're agreeing to pay the 106,000. They mentioned that number. And I'm assuming we're okay with that and, or not, or what? But, or is that something that needs to, what's the process, I guess, coming back? Are we have to, is there an agenda item with an MOU about this, or are we done today with that issue?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Wiley.
There's a point on that, and I think this may relate to your, your previous questions. I'm concerned that there might be a little miscommunication here, and I want to be real clear about how I understand the staff recommendation and what I heard Marborg say just today. Staff recommendation is that the, Marborg be required to post a deposit. Now, this is, if you will, consideration for getting an exclusive period of negotiation. But that deposit is to reimburse the city for the cost of the consultant. It is not conditional. Marborg explained that they would be willing to reimburse the city provided they got the franchise. That's not what staff is suggesting, and I do not advise that approach.
So, to follow-
In terms of your specific question about how this will work, I, you know, I have some thoughts. It might be better for Ms. Schmidt or Mr. Ford to respond, but, yeah.
My answer is, we'll do it the way that the city attorney thinks is the best.
So, but to follow up, so, assuming we move forward with giving direction with sole-source negotiations, there'll still be an agenda item with some form of an MOU that explains the one-year extension of the contract and the provision here about accepting the deposit or something like that? Could you explain that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Typically, how this is done is, right, we would, in a way, this sort of thing is typically approached as a non-binding contract, where you identify certain deal points, certain terms of a contract of a franchise in this case, that there's consensus on. And you identify some things that then may need to be negotiated further. And certain paragraphs, certain aspects of, it's often called an MOU or a deal point memo, certain are actually binding. For example, the obligation to negotiate in good faith for a certain period of time. Might be 90 days or 180 days, depending on the context and what staff and the, and the vendor feel is appropriate. But we would be back presumably in early 2012 with the council, asking the council to authorize staff to approve, let's say, an MOU with Marborg for a period of exclusive negotiations. And we would deal with some of these issues. And hopefully, at the end of that period of negotiations, there is a consensus between staff and Marborg on a possible franchise that could be recommended to the city council. And then we would start the charter process for the public review of that possible franchise.
Thank you. And I know this was brought up in the subcommittee, but the timeline that we're looking at, what we had talked about in the subcommittee, was if all things go as we hope and things work out, by the next fiscal year, we would be, have things in place. That also helps us with our budgeting in terms of the solid waste budget. Is that still accurate?
Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. So, meaning in order for that to work and the charter piece to work, the negotiation should take about three months, we hope, or such? Does that sound about, I mean, if we're looking at June 30th-
It's always difficult to put a time limit on negotiations, but we are, but under this proposal, we would get that, that option if we didn't reach agreement by June 2012. So, we're looking at about six months-
Okay.
-at the, as our, as our goal.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to speak to the dollar amount. We talked about process, but as you saw in our agenda report, your recommendation is that the, that Marborg pay the full amount, the $120,000, assuming we're going to stay to that. You know, if we had gone through a competitive process and Marborg, you know, good chance they would have been the successful contractor. They would have had to pay the full amount. I'm not sure why we would want to limit that now under just a different approach. And we're not talking about a lot of money. We're talking $14,000 differential. So, our recommendation is for the full 120, not a lower amount as suggested by Mr. Carlson. But it's up to council. I just don't personally feel any, why there would be a good reason to, to lower that amount just because we shifted our process.
Thank you for that. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, to Ms. Murillo, I totally agree with your point that we want to get the best possible price, and I think that's what everybody up here is sort of saying. And in one sense, we sort of, this is an opportunity to have our cake and eat it too. We either get the deal we want here or we go back and, oh, we lose time, but we go back to a competitive process. And I think the mayor's comments were excellent about limiting costs, et cetera. Am I understanding correctly that even if we went over the 120,000, that, well, let me ask that. If we went over the 120,000, would, who would be responsible for the overage, or do we know that yet?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think it's really up to council how we want to put limits on that. Our expectation is we won't go over the 120. We'll know that well in advance. And then the message I'm hearing is, we better have a real good reason if we're going to go over 120. And any good reason would be that it had a substantial benefit to the rate payers is to spend a little more to wrap up some negotiation points. But at this point, our expectation is if we do go over 120, that that would be borne by our solid waste fund. But again, that's, that's a council decision.
Okay. Well, I think the mayor is clear and correct in saying it better not go over 120. So, I'm ready to go vote on this one. You are.
Okay. We still have some lights on. Mr. House and then Ms. Self?
I agree with the mayor on the, on not to exceed in terms of the cost for the contract, working with the consultant. I really think that we have the expertise at this point now to carry it forward as much as we, maybe more than you might have anticipated, because I think in-house, we have that ability to do good negotiations. And that goes to the second point I want to make, and that's to, to Marborg. There's no, I don't think there's any organization in Santa Barbara that's closer to the ground than Marborg in terms of understanding the needs of the, of the rate payers and of the character of the community. And I, I do want to add this one other piece to the, the rate issue. Sometimes, I mean, I believe and I share Ms. Murillo's concerns about the rates for the rate payers, especially those that are in the multifamily neighborhoods. And I really see a, you know, small amount of money in terms of rate can make a huge difference to somebody of very modest means. The added piece is, it's the quality of service and specific goals that the city has that, that may make it not only about rate, and I think that's critically important. The diversion rate is really important to us, the ability to do the kind of service that's aesthetically pleasing for the city. And these are really important values that I think the council's articulated, both in policy and in our relationship with both haulers in the past. So, when you do the negotiating, and this is to both parties, it's to Marborg as well as the city, I really expect that even though it's, in a sense, arms-length adversarial, I mean, coming into this in a spirit of real partnership, and I really do look to Marborg to be stepping up here and doing what they do best, which is to, you know, give good, just give it up as best as you can, and let's see what we can get in a cooperative spirit as we move forward on behalf of the city.
Ms. Self?
Thank you.
Thank you. Has our consultant thought any other consideration should be included in the proposal that Marburg gave?
By other consideration, I'm assuming-
Something else they should have included in the bid?
Yes, I think you can get better rates. I think the services are largely there, perhaps with the exception of some additional processing, they get some additional recycling, and we'll be having some conversations with them about that. But, the basic collection services that have been proposed are reasonable. I think the key here is focusing on the rate structures and the overall level of compensation that you'd be paying. If we can reduce the rates 1%, that's $1.6 million over the term, that's an awful lot at stake.
Okay, they're saying they can give 5% if we, if they do the billing. That sounds like a really good deal.
You can talk with your finance director about that. They would also be taking the fees that the city receives for the billing, is my understanding, but-
Well, we would, but we don't, you know, obviously, we have to spend our time, our staff time, collecting and receiving and accounting, so it would, there would be a savings to the city also. It would be the full 820.
We're already doing billing, because we bill our water and wastewater, so, you know, we already have that operation that we need to fund, and it would be $820,000 from, estimated, from the general fund. And at this point, certainly, it's an interesting idea, and, you know, it may be something that we want to explore in the future, if, when the general fund is on a solid basis. I mean, there's no, but at this point, that's our concern with that particular alternative.
I guess my concern is more for the ratepayers, so I can see that as a definite bonus, and also, say if we were to start with a new RFP, how much would that cost us? We've already put in X amount to dealing with the proposal. How much if we were to start with a new RFP, estimated?
I'll let Mr. Zett address that.
Well, we initially had a $120,000 contract to take you through an RFP process. $27,000 into that process, you aborted it, and started us down a new process, so it'd probably be $95,000 or something, that order.
Well, let me, but I thought I heard that part of this process was also looking at comparing other proposals, and making sure that what was being proposed was legit, you know, was comparative to other areas in California, looking at all the other, you know, because we didn't have other proposals coming in, but wouldn't some of that work at the key negotiating points moving forward? You've done that work, as part of this-
Yeah. The two processes are largely different. The things that we've been doing, you would have no reason to do in an RFP process. We would not be looking at what happened in Galata, you would not be looking at what happened in the county. The benchmarks you'd be using are the proposals you receive and comparing them to each other, which is a much simpler to do. I've been through this many, many, many times, and never in an RFP process has anybody said, "Take the proposals, and now bench them against other jurisdictions, because it doesn't matter." It's an entirely different process. This was one of the most confusing and complex proposals I've ever had to evaluate in 20 years, and it took a lot of work, and you've got a really good work product that's going to allow you to, in the next phase, to get to where you need to go. But, the processes are, they have some shared amounts, but not very much.
And I'm assuming that doesn't count city staff time? That would just be consultant costs. Correct? Yeah. Just wanted to make sure. And then I wanted to address Mr. Mario's request that they be billed the full amount above and beyond what we've spent. And I'd like to make the comment that businesses really don't pay fees or taxes. Consumers and ratepayers pay the fees and taxes. So, I can't see why we should be, what we're considering punitive to Marburg, and yet, it turns out, we're being punitive to our ratepayers. I just wanted to make that comment. And, so, you know, there's a lot of things to consider in going forward here, and I do agree with Ms. Mario. I believe I'm the only one that voted against the recent rate increases, especially in these down times. And so, I think it would be good to see where we might meet in the negotiations, and good luck, guys.
Any other comments, questions? Motion?
You need a motion, Madam Mayor?
Need something.
All right, I make a motion that we authorize the finance director to enter exclusive negotiations with Marburg for a citywide solid waste franchise agreement contingent on their written agreement in a form acceptable to the city attorney to the following, A, B, and C. Do I need to elaborate those, or can we?
I think the clerk can get that.
That's fine.
Sir, second.
Second.
Third.
Third. Well, I think it's clear that there's some good work to be done, and we expect, and I would highly expect, all done in good faith. I do think, even if we were in a situation where we ended up looking at a competitive bid process, a lot of the work that's come to date would have moved forward with some of our knowledge base here and some of the issues, so, but we're not talking about that, so that whole other tangent conversation, we don't have to worry about, and hopefully won't have to, because we'll come to a good agreement sometime early in 2012. So, and, Mr. White, you had a comment. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to feedback on what we've got so far. First of all, the big ingredient for me that encourages me to go forward with the sole source is the unique opportunity to have the rates cover the entire city. This is, the two-rate system bothers me, and I feel like it just sets up a divisiveness in the city that I, what I would rather avoid, and I appreciate that we want to get the best rates possible, but that's one of the drivers for me, for encouraging this process. Clearly, there's some other benefits in the form of, for example, that, the C and D facility, that we have opportunity for a unique piece of infrastructure to make use of, citywide, and to invest in communally, in terms of all the rates and so forth, all this going into a single pot. We're seeing this with the CT system that's being proposed on the county level. These big systems have opportunity to provide some unique benefits. I will be looking forward to getting feedback from staff and from this process about how the city's, Santa Barbara's, take, piece of the action is different from how it compares to Galata and to the other, to the other entities. Are we in the ballpark? Are we fair? Are we, are we doing okay in that arena? And obviously, the mailing issue was one of the issues brought up. I just would appreciate some, a bit of analysis coming forward. And finally, to Ms. Mario's comment about rents. From the landlord's perspective, usually, rents are set at a market rate. The market, and the landlord is usually charging as much as a landlord can to what the market will bear, and that the costs underneath that vary, depending on what the mortgage is, and what, when they bought it, and how leveraged, and so forth, and so on. So, that the market is really what sets those rents, and definitely, we want to be as efficient as possible, but I don't see, when you're talking about a 5% increase of $10 per unit, per month, those numbers kind of get into the noise of a landlord's concerns with regards to maintenance, taxes, and all the other costs. Thank you.
Thank you. I think just also to close the loop on the issue of the policy, of what to do about this MOU, and who pays for what, my suggestion would be, as you work with the city attorney and bringing this back to council, that we have an amount that was agreed upon by this council, you've heard from us, we don't want to have it exceeded. If that should happen, then we, then we figure out at that point how it's paid for, as opposed to creating this open-ended blank check, unknown situation. I think that's the fairest way to go, because, like you said, there might be some great circumstance that Marburg may be more than willing to pay for, or, you know, who knows? Who knows? The future is unknown. So, I think the fairest way is to keep within that current contract amount for now, and if that should change, then that's a whole other discussion we'll have into the future. But, just to move things forward, unless I'm hearing something different from colleagues, that seems to make a lot of sense, to me, anyway. Okay. Lot of discussion. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. That passes. Item number 17, do you want to take a quick break? I think, let's take a 10-minute break. Okay, I'm going to call the city council meeting back to order. It rained over, oh, I'm sorry.
I just got a call that we're going to close the deal.
I apologize, I didn't realize you were chatting with someone. All right, now I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Item number 17.
Annual Water Supply Management Report.
Right, it rained over the weekend, it must be time for the annual water supply management report. Ms. Bjork?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Rebecca Bjork, Water Resources Manager, and I was going to point out that in recent years, we've had a, developed somewhat of a pattern of having it rain the day of this report. However, we missed it this year. It rained yesterday and not today. So, I always look forward to giving this report and updating council, both on the status of our water supplies, as well as on significant issues for the water supply and water system. However, this year, I have asked Bill Ferguson to make the report. It is Bill's last council meeting, as our water resources supervisor. He's been with the city for 28 years, and during that time, he has provided me with incomparable support, and my predecessors with incomparable support, and I believe the city with incomparable support, and I'd like to acknowledge him for his long tenure, hard work, and excellent ability, and I'm looking forward to his report.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. I'm pleased to make the report, and pleased to be here today, and as I have been for 28 years. Our annual report is a chance to touch base once a year. It seems worthy to do that with the city's water supply, it's an important part of the community, and so we look once a year and bring a report to you. On a more detailed basis, we look every five years for the state water plan, the urban water management plan, and then on a 20-year roughly cycle, we do a long-term supply plan update, and we've just finished that, as you know, this past year. So, today, we're going to talk briefly about our water supplies, just to highlight the elements of those. We're going to talk about the long-term water supply plan, and what it means for us going forward, and we have a few other significant water supply issues to just touch base on as well, and then recommended council action. We'll be briefed today, but we will have time for questions, if you'd like them. In the past, we've spent many pages and many slides on what our water supplies are. Today, we're going to give you one slide on that, so this is the short version. Gives us a chance to hit the highlights for each of these supplies and what they mean. We always like to remember that the thing about Kachuma is that it's a multi-year supply. It's a large regional reservoir, single dry year doesn't bother us, second dry year, we start thinking about where we might be going. We get a little ways into a three- or four-year drought, and then we have some more consideration to make, but that's a good buffer for our supply. At Gibraltar, that's a substantial additional amount of city water rights up there. The main issue right there now is moving to the pass-through mode. We'll talk a little bit more about that briefly. Mission Tunnel is just water that comes to us as a result of the tunnel, the construction project. It's a good part of our baseload. It is somewhat variable based on rain, but it is a significant part of our water supply. The important thing about state water project is that it provides us an opportunity to get some water, but it also provides us the connectivity with other agencies in the state, ability to move water around, move water into storage, and that's a key part of our new plan as well. On groundwater, we always like to remember that it's both a regular contributor to our annual water supply, and it's also an emergency supply, in the event that we have interruption of supplies from the San Andres River. It also plays an important part during the critical drought period. And on recycled water, the goal there is that we have a separate system that allows us to use recycled wastewater to offset potable supplies, that then stretches those supplies for potable uses. Conservation, we always count as part of our supply, it's really a demand management effort. It does allow us to avoid those extra costs that come with new supplies, the marginal costs are always higher, and by saving water, we can avoid those. And finally, we retain desalination as part of our official water supply, not with the plan to use it, but as insurance for extraordinary events that are beyond the assumptions in our long-term planning. I'll move very quickly through some of the management policies and the implementation efforts associated with the new plan. The plan is based on a target of 15,400 acre feet, that's 14,000 normal demand plus a 10% safety margin. We're aiming to meet our goals over a six-year critical drought period now, instead of five, and we plan to have reductions in demand during the latter part of critical drought up to 15%. We're pursuing sedimentation management at both Gibraltar and Kachuma. That will take some joint cooperative effort with other agencies and local water purveyors. Again, groundwater modeling, we'll continue with USGS, and we expect to adopt a groundwater management plan to formalize the management of our groundwater. Continuing with our long-term plan, the goal at Gibraltar is a federal contract to allow the storage of water in Kachuma from Gibraltar, as a part of the pass-through agreement that was signed in 1989. We have developed the modeling on that, and prepared a draft technical report for basis of environmental review to implement the pass-through options. In lieu of deciding to go right to D-SAL, we've looked at the option of banking water, most likely available state water for use during a critical drought period, instead of activating D-SAL. There are opportunities to do that. In fact, CCWA has recently initiated a contract to store water in the Central Valley, Dudley Ridge Water District, partly with some prompting from Ms. Bjork to recognize the value of using the pipeline to build storage, in addition to deliver regular project entitlement from state water. Recycled water, we're aiming to aim, to add 300 acre feet of new demand there, to offset demand that would otherwise be potable water, and also to develop a plan to eliminate the use of potable water for blending. That'll help us reduce the need for potable water supply overall. One of the important elements that came out of our council work session was the goal of developing an emergency response plan to deal with the potential for interruption of water supplies from the San Andres River. That would be a substantial portion of our water supply, if that were to happen, all of Gibraltar, all of Kachuma, possibly the tunnel waters as well, no state water would be able to be coming through. For potable purposes, we'd be limited mostly to groundwater, and so we need to look more closely at that, and assess what it takes to run the system, keep the distribution system active in that type of situation. And finally, our goal in the long-term plan is to implement conservation as needed to meet the state's mandate for water use reduction, and that's applying statewide for all water There are a few other issues we want to highlight. We started the year with Kachuma 97% full. In addition to that, we have over 5,000 acre feet of carryover that came into the new year, so that's a good place to be at Lake Kachuma. The groundwater basins are not in overdraft, we use them conjunctively, and on a long-term average basis, they're in balance. The ever-ongoing Kachuma Water Rights Hearing is ongoing still, but it is moving ahead slowly. We understand the state has just issued the completed final EIR, including response to comments. There will be a hearing scheduled, I believe, in order to provide public comment on that document, and then we're moving forward to developing a decision. That's liable to be another year, at least, before that happens. And our conservation program continues. It is popular, avoids the extra costs, and helps us meet that state mandate, state mandate for water conservation. We show you this to track the history of our demand. Note that during the early part of that graph, that was the late 80s- Note that during the early part of that graph, that was the late '80s. Our demand was up around 16,300. We're now down to a normal-year demand of about 14,000 at the right end of the chart there. And the difference there reflects the value of our ability to cut back on water use and sustain that with ups and downs based on weather. You see, 1998 is a dip. They are right about in the middle, and that reflects the El Nino year. The big jump at the right there is the 2007, 2008 dry period, driest year in the 100-year record. So we're responding to weather on that. As we move forward, we'll be tracking it on a little bit different metric. That's the gross water use definition required by the state, and that translates into per capita daily usage. And you can see that we are aiming for reduced demand based on the effect of plumbing codes, plumbing standards, and conservation measures and efforts that we'll be doing. We always like to show you this to remind you how Lake Kachuma works. It's a, the history of the water levels at Kachuma over the past 14 years approximately. Superimposed there in red is the most recent critical drought in 1987 to 91. Again, the point is, it's a multi-year supply, and we can count on that to get us to a good part of a drought. This is a chart that was in the report. It's a modeling of how we would, starting from now, address a six-year critical drought. It's always good to look ahead. Every year, we make it a point to do this analysis to say, how would we deal with the six-year critical drought if we are now in year one of it? And that's what this chart shows us. The supplies are identified there, and we can discuss this more if you'd like about what the amounts are and how they're put together to get the total demand. So that brings us to the end. We have to answer any questions. And we're, in the recommendation, we're asking you to make the finding of the groundwater balance. That's required by a report that we submit every year to CCWA, and finally, adoption of the annual plan.
Thank you. And I don't see any public speaker slips on this item. Okay. Mr. Hacchus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as I understand it, we pretend that there's always a drought coming, and every year, we move that forward, one year, it's another six years. Is that the layman's way of looking at it?
Yes, unless we have, unless, for instance, the current year turns out to be a below-average rainfall year, average or less, meaning we'd get very little inflow to Kachuma, and that curve starts down.
Okay. That didn't happen this year, though.
We're just entering that year now. We just started the water year in October.
Okay. Last year?
The current water year, 2012, starts October 1st. So it depends on how this year develops, from October through September. That's our first year.
How about 2011? How did that work out?
That was a spill year. And so the six-year drought starts for the first year after the spill.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't, I don't quite get how, can you go back to that bar chart? This is the previous slide. Yeah. How are we consuming more water in year six than in year five of the drought? Is that my, am I missing something there? What am I missing?
It has to do with the relative availability of other supplies.
Just take a second to describe to the folks.
I think the answer is that in order to meet our goal in year five, we would have to actually exercise some of these, the drought supply category, which would be purchase of water on the spot market or delivery of water from our banked water. In the sixth year, you see that Gibraltar recovers significantly, which is based on historic modeling for the critical drought period here. And so we managed to get to the point where we can meet the supply and have a shortage that's no more than 15% without doing additional drought supplies.
Okay.
The result of the total in year five is exactly 85% of the 14,000 total. So we do the extra cost of buying some water or taking water from the stored, the water bank in order to meet the target of no more than 15% shortage. In the following year, we have more water available. We don't need to take a shortage as much as that. And this is just one way that we might approach this. In any one year along the way, we're going to decide on what's really available to us. For instance, right now, we have 5,000 acre-feet of additional carryover. This shows use of about 2,000 acre-feet. So we always have some options. That's why an annual report's a good idea.
Yeah. As I say, it just looks a little strange, and you're really hurting, and then you start using a little more water. So I appreciate that there would be a completely different strategy. If you got out that far and you still were hurting, you'd be cutting back your consumption even more and all that. But I just thought that was an interesting, first time I had noticed that in this planning effort.
Mr. House?
Just a couple of questions on the, it sounds like the tunnel, or tunnels, have become actual real sources of additional water. And to what degree is that reflected here, or does that actually benefit us? It sounds like they're, they've become wells, basically, under the mountains.
That's exactly right. They're regarded as a horizontal well with infiltration. And they've contributed to the city's water supply ever since the tunnel was built back in 1911, 1912, in that range. So yes.
The question I have for you, because that's a little different from the groundwater basins, that if they're depleted too much, can be damaged by saltwater intrusion when they're near the coast. Wells that are horizontal into the mountains, we've just lucked out that they happened, those tunnels happened to have been near where water is, except for somebody had a divining rod that worked sideways. Is there, what's the possibility of us actually generating and developing horizontal wells elsewhere with the intention to mine the water that's in the mountains that would not have an impact on the, on the saltwater intrusion factor?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, part of the issue is that this tunnel was built early on. We probably would have to do a much more thorough analysis of the effects of that type of development of water than it would be the cost of doing that. There was some analysis of that for the earlier period during the drought of 1990. With the end of the drought, it wasn't necessary to pursue that any further.
I just, Rebecca may have something more to say on that, because it seems like if we're looking for long-term stability, there, this might be, while there's cost associated, certainly a lot less than the desal plant. It's certainly a lot, you know, recommissioning, I would imagine. It seems like it would, yeah, it just seems like there would be quite an opportunity here that we might want to pursue.
Mr. White's been jumping at the bits.
Well, the historian in me will say this. The city of Santa Barbara, and maybe Mr. Wiley probably recalls this, developed the Coal Springs Tunnel in 1888, and immediately got into one heck of a big lawsuit with the, yeah. So.
He's been here a long time, but not that long.
Yeah. So that good idea, because the horizontal wells were quite prevalent in Southern California in that era. And so they came here, and there are a number of them along the front country here. But that was a city development that then it just, of course, you can imagine the folks of Montecito have had some pretty good firepower to contest that. And that city never was able to make use of that water. So it's, horizontal wells, communal horizontal wells probably have a whole lot of lawsuits attached to them.
Well, somebody will be termed out in two years. I could start something. Hey, Ms. Bjork?
Bjork, did you want to bring it back to the 21st century here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I just wanted to build on what Bill was saying. We did, during the drought of the late '80s, investigate additional horizontal wells up in the Mission Canyon reach, and they had very, very low production. So expensive and low production. The Mission Tunnel, we see a response to drought, just as we do in all of our supplies. It is replenished from groundwater. So we do see the Mission Tunnel supply go down during drought as well. We still get water, but we, and we do plan to have less water from Mission Tunnel during periods of low precipitation. So it has a drought response. It's a potential supply. It's not, I don't think we'd expect to see, you know, thousands of acre-feet from another tunnel.
Okay. Thank you. I have one other question.
Go ahead.
And to what degree, and this is, excuse me if I've missed something big, but how do our neighbors' behavior affect our water supply? And we're, you know, we're surrounded by others who are drawing from the same sources. And how does the report address not just our own good behavior, because we've managed in the city of Santa Barbara to stabilize at a much lower level than we'd been in the '80s? How are we doing as a neighborhood, so to speak? And how's that addressed in the report?
Well, the report reflects our city water supplies, and they're all somewhat different. Kachuma, the main one, is a joint effort of a number of water agencies on the South Coast, and also the Improvement District Number One, ID Number One in San Andres. That's managed jointly, not without some debate and controversy, but it's an important resource, and we make that work. Gibraltar, we manage on our own, but under the terms of the pass-through agreement, there was a consensus, an agreement of all the parties on the river back in 1989. Groundwater, we're mostly separate in terms of pumping, except we do share the Foothill Basin out in the Outer State Street area with the Lacombra Mutual Water Company, no longer with Galita Water District under the '82 overlap agreement. So there is some joint cooperation on groundwater in that basin. We're mostly on our own in the downtown groundwater basin. And recycled water, that's a city, mostly city water resource available and operated by the city itself. State water, of course, is a statewide effort, and we cooperate through CCWA on that. So.
Let me take it one, just one little step further then. So I know that the city has this remarkable program where those who would consume quite a bit of water, larger estates, golf courses, and even agriculture, they can hook up to the meteorologically determined, radio dispatched water conservation measures, right? I mean, they're, all that can happen. Well, Montecito, I don't think has the same thing, or maybe they do. If they don't, they may be very well for those large villas and all, just going right along and keeping their places lush while we're conserving like crazy. I mean, how are we, how are we doing in terms of sharing that technology and keeping the conservation levels high with our neighbors who are drawing from the same places?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that actually is one of the best tools we have available for us for conservation. The amount of water used for outside, water use for irrigation is a huge percentage of our total water supply, and it's probably one that's not managed as well as it should be. And the type of tool that you mentioned, either sophisticated radio-controlled irrigation controller, or tracking the irrigation index on our city website, all of those are different ways of tapping into putting the right amount of water based on how much rainfall we've had and what kind of weather conditions we've had. And we share that type of information and technology and program development with the other neighboring agencies, Montecito, Galita, and throughout Santa Barbara County to some extent as well. And in that sense, we're getting a more efficient use of the dollars that we put into conservation and better regional goals as far as conservation as well.
Okay. I hope that we can keep up that regional cooperation and continue to share that with our, with our neighbors. Thank you.
No, their lights on. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve and adopt the waters, what is it, Water Supply Management Report for 2011.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And thank you very much, Mr. Ferguson, for your many, many years of service, and good luck to you in your next chapter, wherever it may take.
Thank you very much. Part of it will be here on a part-time basis. I look forward to that.
There you go. Just when you thought you were out, they pulled you back in. It's all good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 18.
Appointments to city advisory groups.
Okay. Just to clarify for those listening, and, oh, we have, okay, we have a public comment speaker we'll get to in just a moment. And then the way this works is anyone on council can nominate as many people eligible to be nominated, which is what you have in your staff report. And then we'll go through a roll call. The clerk will call, go do a roll call vote, unless there's a vote by acclamation for each item. And it needs four votes to pass for each person. So, Mr. Burke? And you had a question, Mr. House? Did you want to ask that right now?
Yes, I just wanted to do this. We had, we had at least a couple of positions where the incumbents had not, they had put their names in, but they had not come for an interview. And I'm just wondering, we have a basic, typically, we have a practice where somebody who's in a position and there's not a replacement for that position, may continue on in that until we find a replacement. Have we, any, for instance, on the very first category, architectural engineering building communities for the access advisory committee, Mr. Barnwell and Janet Chan?
I can answer. Just being on that subcommittee before, the practice currently is, an incumbent is up, does not come for an interview. The slot remains vacant after we make the appointments. That incumbent's invited to continue on until we actually make the appointment. That person can, should come to the next round of interviews to get the full term. But it's possible, for example, if they didn't come for an interview and there are other people in the same category, and if it gets filled, then they're no longer in that position.
Oh, sure. Understood.
But for example, the ones you just mentioned, the first access advisory committee, there were no, there's no one in that category that could fit. And then, so the two incumbents could, would be invited to continue. They don't have to.
No, understood. Okay. So I just wanted to understand.
And I think Mr. Loretto from the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, there's a similar situation.
Okay. In this case, these two have really distinguished themselves and done real well, and I just wondered if they'd be invited.
Yeah. So we don't need to make any, take any action today about that, but that's the general practice. Unless I'm mistaken, but I'm pretty sure that's how it works. Okay. Mr. Burke?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. When I first wanted to apply for the Housing Authority Commission, open seat for 62-plus and on Section 8 with the Housing Authority, my application was denied because it was decided that I did not meet the qualifications, and that the qualifications had to be met at the time of application. I did the research and found the legislative analyst's position on that, and I think it's settled now that it is at the time of appointment that you have to meet the qualifications. So as far as that is concerned, my application is acceptable. The other issue is that I have to be a resident. I have to be leased up. And I'm treading on a dangerous ground here of trying to, I had conversations with Rob Pearson about this, and I do not want to put words in his mouth, but I do want to reflect what the conversations were about. I did consult my own legal counsel, and that legal counsel said, as long as I have the Section 8 voucher in hand, then I'm eligible. And I got that Section 8 voucher a week ago last Friday. So the issue comes between my legal source and what I've heard Mr. Pearson say. And he says you have to be leased up. Well, I met that qualification this morning. I have a lease with a landlady, but I want to be full exposure on this. It's, I have given money and valuable consideration. There's a contractual agreement. The actual lease itself is not signed, and that will probably be done tomorrow. And that's what we've agreed to. So I think I qualify. And I think I qualify according to what I heard Mr. Pearson say. Again, I've been, the reason I've been stepping out is because I've been trying to get ahold of him, to get a clear declarative statement, yes or no. And like I said, I do not want to put words in his mouth. But from the understanding I have of the conversations we have, I qualify for that position on the Housing Authority Commission. Questions? I think that's it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the public comment portion of this item. Okay. Thank you for that, and congratulations on getting a lease. That's important. So we're just going to go from A to Z. We'll start with the access advisory committee. There are two vacancies available in the disability community, section and three applicants. So are there any nominations?
Nominate Robert Burnham.
Scott Smigel. Nominate McClellan.
Okay. So we need a vote?
Councilmember Francisco.
Burnham and McClellan.
Hacchus.
Burnham and McClellan.
House.
Burnham, McClellan.
Self. White.
Smigel and Burnham.
Schneider.
Burnham and McClellan.
Mr. Burnham and McClellan.
Architectural Board of Review, two vacancies. Any nominations?
Nominate Kirk Greeden and Stephanie Poole.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Kupiak.
Any other nominations? Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Hacchus.
Poole and Greeden.
House.
Gredean and Poole.
Self. White.
Gredean and Kupiak.
Mayor Schneider.
Gredean and Poole.
Councilmember Francisco.
Gredean and Kupiak.
Mr. Gredean and Ms. Poole.
Okay. Arts Advisory Committee, there are three vacancies. Any nominations? I'll nominate Bleacher, Bonk, and Taylor. I'll nominate Bleacher, Bonk, and Taylor.
Nominate VanderVort.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Jacobs.
Any other nominations? Okay, we have to vote for three.
I think it's for Bleacher, Jacobs, VanderVort.
Bleacher, Jacobs, Taylor, VanderVort, and Bonk are the nominees.
Okay. Councilmember House.
Bleacher, Taylor, and VanderVort.
Self.
Bleacher, Taylor, and Bonk.
White.
Bleacher, Taylor, and Jacobs.
Mayor Schneider.
Bleacher, Taylor, and Bonk.
Councilmember Francisco.
Bleacher, Taylor, and Bonk.
Councilmember Hachkas.
Bleacher, Taylor, and Bonk.
Bleacher, Taylor, and Bonk.
Okay. Nothing for Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals or Cent, oh, question. Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens, I got an email from Brenda Powell, who's a member of our CDBG Human Services Committee, that we didn't have any applicants to this by the deadline, and she then submitted an application. I guess we, I guess we need to put it into the next cycle, I guess, or if we, if there's a, I guess my question is if there's a need, this is a regional kind of board, and if there's a real need that we need to fill this slot sooner rather than later, perhaps we should look at a special recruitment early 2012 as opposed to waiting for six months, but.
I think that the council, if you wanted, could appoint Ms. Powell now because you don't, the, the application process is something within your guidelines. It's not by state law. We did post the vacancy. If you wanted to have her an application and interview her, then we could do a special.
Yeah, I, I personally like Ms. Powell a lot. I think she'd be great. I think to be consistent, though, we need to at least interview her. But, so, I guess, but I'd like to follow up to see if this is something that can wait six months or if we need a special, we don't have to answer that today.
At my understanding, it's been vacant for a couple of years.
Okay, okay. We can move, so she can certainly go to the meetings, that's for sure, and participate that way. Okay. Civil Service Commission, I move Kay Sagan and Lewis by acclamation.
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Community Development and Human Services.
Loza and Ramirez by acclamation.
There's a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Community Events and Festivals Committee.
Acclamation, these three.
Inks and Schwab by acclamation.
McCarthy, Inks, and Schwab, all those, was there a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Creeks Advisory Committee.
Same here. Bullock, McIntosh, Muldaver, and Weber by acclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Downtown Parking Committee.
Collier and Williams by acclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Fire and Police Commission, two vacancies, four applicants. Any nominations?
Nominate Christensen.
Nominate Parker.
Nominate Terrell.
Nominate Zink.
Okay.
Councilmember Self. White.
Christensen and Zink.
Mayor Schneider.
Christensen and Terrell.
Councilmember Francisco.
Christensen and Parker.
Hachkas.
Christensen and Parker.
House.
Christensen and Zink.
We have Christensen, but we have.
Do we need to do another roll call for the other three?
Yes.
Okay. So, Parker, Terrell, and Zink, is that right? For one, so obviously, you're only doing one at this one.
Right, yes. Councilmember White.
Terrell.
Mayor Schneider.
Terrell.
Councilmember Francisco.
Parker.
Hachkas.
Parker.
House.
Terrell.
That would be.
You need one more vote?
Yeah.
No, I mean, you need to have someone else vote.
Councilmember Self, I apologize.
Okay, so that's 3-3.
I still have 3 to 3.
Anyone want to budge? Or I guess if we're at a 3-3, the other option is to hold off until we have seven council members to do this. But unless someone wants to switch their vote.
In the interest of moving forward, I'll vote for Terrell.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no one for Fire and Police Pension Commission, Harbor Commission?
By acclamation, Kelly and Webb.
Aye.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Historic Landmarks Commission?
Nominate Jury and Winnick.
Any other nominations? Hold on, okay.
You said, what was it?
Jury and Winnick are nominated. Nominated. Any other nominations? Okay. Vote by acclamation, sir?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Housing Authority Commission, any nominations?
Sir by acclamation.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Library Board, there are no applicants. Same with Measure P Committee. Neighborhood Advisory Council?
Panion Kingston by acclamation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Parks and Recreation Commission?
Nominate Jacobs.
Nominate Trenacosty.
Any other applica, nominations? Okay, there's one vacancy, so we need to vote.
Mayor Schneider.
Trenacosty.
Councilmember Francisco.
Trenacosty.
Hachkas.
Trenacosty.
House.
Jacobs.
Self. White.
Trenacosty.
Mr. Trenacosty.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission?
Nominate Thompson and Ruchon.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Pujo and Campanella.
Any other nominations? Okay, we have two vacancies, so we need, there's Campanella, Pujo, Ruchon, and Thompson.
Councilmember Francisco.
Thompson and Ruchon.
Hachkas.
Ruchon and Thompson.
House.
Pujo and Campanella.
Self. White.
Pujo and Campanella.
Mayor Schneider.
Thompson and Pujo.
We have four votes for Mr. Thompson and three for Pujo and Ruchon.
Okay, so we need to vote again on the one, because, because we voted for two last time. So, we should do a, right? We should do another roll call for the other position.
Okay. Councilmember Hachkas.
Ruchon.
What are the choices?
Pujo and Ruchon, correct?
Pujo and Ruchon.
Pujo and Ruchon.
I mean, unless, well, I guess you can, you can vote for anyone you want, right? But, but.
Thompson, however, has been elected, correct?
Thompson's in, so we still have one more vacancy.
Ruchon again.
Okay, so one vote, that's right.
House.
Pujo.
Self. White.
Pujo.
Mayor Schneider.
Pujo.
Francisco.
Ruchon.
Okay, we're at a.
We still have 3 to 3.
3 to 3. Any suggestions on moving forward with this one?
Wait till we have seven.
That's one option? Any other options?
Seacord, nominate.
Well, he wasn't even nominated, I would think we want to.
Can we not throw him in the mix now?
For a compliment.
Okay.
I suggest we wait until we have seven members.
Well, we can try another round with added nominations if you want. Try one more time, and if that doesn't work, we can go for when we have seven members present.
If we do that, I'd add Seacord.
Okay, so, any other nominations then?
So, then the nominations are?
So, now it's Campanella, Pujo, Ruchon, and Seacord.
Oh, no. Oh, oh, yeah.
Right?
No, Campanella, was Campanella in the mix? I'll nominate Campanella if he's not in the mix.
So, if we're going to try this again, Campanella, Pujo, Ruchon, and Seacord, and we have one vote, we can try it that way.
Councilmember Hachkas.
Seacord.
House.
Pujo.
Self. White.
Campanella.
Mayor Schneider.
Campanella.
Councilmember Francisco.
Ruchon.
Is everybody? Well, that was worse than the last one, so.
Yes.
Not worse. It, it just shows we have a good selection. So, unless anyone really has a brilliant idea, I think we have to hold this one off until January or February, when we have seven council members.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, stay tuned for that. Okay, Rental Housing Mediation Task Force.
Nominate McDermott and Brainerd by acclamation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.